Now, we'll stay with the other. Why do you do that to me? Yeah, so. Yeah, well, give me a second. Good evening. My name is Chaka Iovin, and I'll be presiding over the planning board meeting, March 12, 2025. For those in attendance, under the provisions of the open meeting law, attendees are being informed that this meeting is being recorded by Urban Media Arts and will be livestreamed on Malden Access MATV YouTube site. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. We will start with a roll call, starting on our left with Ronnie. Ronnie Rajverma, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Ken Antonucci, Planning Board.
Chaka Iovin, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Riza Gray, Planning Board.
Stephanie Stone, Planning Board.
Thank you. And for everyone's notification, there are eight members that will be voting on both our public hearings this evening. Okay. Diane, if you could read the first notice for 9195 Medford Street, please.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass., at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, March 12, 2025, tabled on September 13, 2023, on the petition of 41 Warren LLC, permit application number RES058977-2023, seeking a special permit under Title 12, Chapter 28, Section 010 D1 of the Code of the City of Malden, to alter, structurally change, and change use of pre-existing non-conforming property in the Residence A zoning district, namely to convert the vacant storefront to a sixth residential dwelling unit and to change use of the building from a multifamily dwelling with five units to a multi-dwelling unit with six units at the property known as and numbered 91-95 Medford Street, Malden, Mass., and by city's assessor's parcel ID number 066304407.
Thank you very much, Diane, and I see the petitioner's attorney is present. I'd like to remind everyone, if you're coming up to the podium, please give us your name and residential address for the record, and please sign the clipboard so we have the proper spelling of name and address. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Patrick McDonald. I maintain a law office at 479 Eastern Avenue here in Malden, and I represent the petitioner in the matter before the board, 41 Warren LLC, which is the record owner of the real property known as and number 95-95 Medford Street here in Malden. The petitioner's application is to request a special permit to convert the existing or a portion of the existing first floor of the subject property from its previous grandfathered commercial use to a residential use. The subject property is a pre-existing non-conforming mixed-use multifamily property at that site, and that area of the city is now currently zoned as Residence A, single-family use only. The proposal does not enlarge or expand the structure in any way, shape, manner, or form. There is no increase to the footprint that is being sought. There is no increase to the site. Again, it seeks only to convert the 1,650 square feet of the first floor of the structure from what had been a commercial use to now a residential use, which would create a sixth residential unit in the property. The other two stories of the building are residences, residential units, and the remaining portion of the first floor is an existing residential unit. The previously grandfathered commercial use, the most recent commercial use, was as a dough company. This dates back to 2020, basically, the first year of pandemic. At that time, the owner was renting the section of the building that's at issue before the board tonight to a company that made dough and then presumably sold it to various restaurants that made pizza dough and sold it to restaurants that then baked it into pizza. The owner of the building and the petitioner, 41 Warren LLC, got into a very serious dispute with that occupant. That occupant wasn't paying its rent. That occupant was doing things inside the unit that it should not have been doing, related to plumbing, related to electrical matters, and was blaming the petitioner for it when in fact was the problem of the tenant. The city got involved, became aware, the building department became aware of any number of violations, issued cease and desist orders preventing that business from operating until those issues were resolved, but those issues weren't getting resolved because there was a dispute between the owner, the petitioner, and the occupant at the time. I represented the occupant at that time, who had to bring a summary process action in the Malden District Court, an eviction action in the Malden District Court. But again, because it was the outset of the pandemic in 2020, eviction matters of any kind were not moving particularly quickly in our court system at that point in time, and it took a very long time to accomplish the eviction of that tenant. The petitioner ultimately prevailed. The petitioner had also been sued, or actually, the principal of the petitioner, Mr. Jamarro Shintari, had also been sued by that occupant in a Superior Court matter, which was taking place at the same time. So for a period of one to two years, beginning in 2020, nothing was happening in that unit, and the commercial use was not being utilized by the tenant because the tenant had been forced to cease operations because of orders issued by the city. The petitioner ultimately prevailed in both of those matters, but it took over a year to get both of those matters resolved. And of course, because we were knee-deep in the pandemic at that point in time, and because of the significant damage and wrongdoing, frankly, that had been committed by the tenant in that unit, it was not able to be taken care of, and it certainly was not able to have been rented again. It was not exactly a fruitful environment for commercial occupancy and rental at that point in time. And as a consequence, the commercial use has lapsed because it was not taken advantage of for two years. So at this point in time, 1,650 square feet of the first floor of that building, which had previously been grandfathered commercial use, now is an essentially legal limbo. The grandfathered commercial use is no longer grandfathered, and no commercial use is permitted at that location because the area is now Residence A, and the only way to make that 1,650 square feet useful in any way, specifically in a residential way, would be through this process, the special permit process, which is why the petitioner is before the board. As I said, there are no changes to the building, no expansions of any kind, no increase in size or shape of the building, just the conversion of 1,650 square feet of the property on the first floor from commercial to residential. We certainly recognize that this is a difficult property. It's Residence A, it's six units in a three-story building, crammed onto a 4,500-square-foot lot that violates almost every dimensional control ordinance that exists in the city of Malden. But we respectfully suggest to the board that right now, there's no legal use of that 1,600 square feet that can be made without some relief granted by this body. And we believe that the conversion of the unit to residential from its previous use as commercial ultimately is better for the neighborhood. It certainly now makes, it would now make the property entirely consistent with the nature of use in the area, it being Residence A, at least the entire building is all residential. It removes a commercial use in the middle of an RA district, and that in general is a good thing and in line with what the city is seeking for that area of the city by virtue of the current zoning. A denial would essentially amount to a taking at this point in time because it would be a decision by the city that this owner cannot use that property for any reason, or that portion of the property for any reason at all, turning 1,650 square feet of that building into essentially a dead zone at this point in time. And that can't be good for the neighborhood, and it can't be good for the owner of the building either. As I said, we understand it's a difficult property, but leaving it dead is not a viable option for the city or the property owner, and keeping it commercial was not a particularly good use in that area anyway. The surrounding uses are all residential. I do note that there is a small restaurant business located nearby, I believe it's called Mexal Restaurant, a very small restaurant, but other than that, it's entirely residential, and this would make this property entirely residential. We can't do anything about the parking. The property was noncompliant with respect to parking before. It's going to continue to be noncompliant with respect to parking. We can't do anything with respect to the various dimensional control violations because the building takes up the vast majority of the lot, and it's impractical to try and remedy those dimensional control violations. You'd have to tear half the building down to make it compliant with setbacks and so on and so forth. So while this is not an ideal use by any means, and we don't suggest it, it is, we do believe it's a better use, a more consistent use with zoning. It allows the owner to use the entirety of his property, and it's a use that doesn't conflict, at least with the spirit of the zoning and the nature of the zoning in the area, as Residence A. I have with me today, unfortunately, I could not bring the principal of 41 Warren LLC, Mr. Jamarro Shintari, he had a previously scheduled family vacation, but with me are Mr.
a portion of the existing first floor of the subject property from its previous grandfathered commercial use to a residential use. The subject property is a pre-existing non-conforming mixed-use multifamily property at that site, and that area of the city is now currently zoned as Residence A, single-family use only. The proposal does not enlarge or expand the structure in any way, shape, manner, or form. There is no increase to the footprint that is being sought. There is no increase to the site. Again, it seeks only to convert the 1,650 square feet of the first floor of the structure from what had been a commercial use to now a residential use, which would create a sixth residential unit in the property. The other two stories of the building are residences, residential units, and the remaining portion of the first floor is an existing residential unit. The previously grandfathered commercial use, the most recent commercial use was as a dough company. This dates back to 2020, basically, the first year of pandemic. At that time, the owner was renting the section of the building that's at issue before the Board tonight to a company that made dough and then presumably sold it to various restaurants that made pizza dough and sold it to restaurants that then baked it into pizza. The owner of the building and the petitioner, Forty-One Warren LLC, got into a very serious dispute with that occupant. That occupant wasn't paying its rent. That occupant was doing things inside the unit that it should not have been doing, related to plumbing, related to electrical matters, and was blaming the petitioner for it, when in fact was the problem of the tenant. The city got involved, became aware, the Building Department came aware of any number of violations, issued cease and desist orders preventing that business from operating until those issues were resolved, but those issues weren't getting resolved because there was a dispute between the owner, the petitioner, and the occupant at the time. I represented the occupant at that time, who had to bring a summary process action in the Malden District Court, an eviction action in the Malden District Court. But again, because it was the outset of the pandemic in 2020, eviction matters of any kind were not moving particularly quickly in our court system at that point in time. And it took a very long time to accomplish the eviction of that tenant. The petitioner ultimately prevailed. The petitioner had also been sued, or actually, the principal of the petitioner, Mr. Jamatro Shintari, had also been sued by that occupant in a Superior Court matter, which was taking place at the same time. So for a period of one to two years, beginning in 2020, nothing was happening in that unit, and the commercial use was not being utilized by the tenant because the tenant had been forced to cease operations because of orders issued by the city. The petitioner ultimately prevailed in both of those matters, but it took over a year to get both of those matters resolved. And of course, because we were knee-deep in the pandemic at that point in time, and because of the significant damage and wrongdoing, frankly, that had been committed by the tenant in that unit, it was not able to be taken care of, and it certainly was not able to have been rented again. It was not exactly a fruitful environment for commercial occupancy and rental at that point in time. And as a consequence, the commercial use has lapsed because it was not taken advantage of for two years. So at this point in time, 1,650 square feet of the first floor of that building, which had previously been grandfathered commercial use, now is an essentially legal limbo. The grandfathered commercial use is no longer grandfathered, and no commercial use is permitted at that location because the area is now Residence A. And the only way to make that 1,650 square feet useful in any way, specifically in a residential way, would be through this process, the special permit process, which is why the petitioner is before the Board. As I said, there are no changes to the building, no expansions of any kind, no increase in size or shape of the building, just the conversion of 1,650 square feet of the property on the first floor from commercial to residential. We certainly recognize that this is a difficult property. It's Residence A. It's six units in a three-story building crammed onto a 4,500-square-foot lot that violates almost every dimensional control ordinance that exists in the City of Malden. But we respectfully suggest to the Board that right now, there's no legal use of that 1,600 square feet that can be made without some relief granted by this body. And we believe that the conversion of the unit to residential from its previous use as commercial ultimately is better for the neighborhood. It certainly now makes the it would now make the property entirely consistent with the nature of use in the area, it being Residence A. At least the entire building is all residential. It removes a commercial use in the middle of an RA district, and that in general is a good thing and in line with what the city is seeking for that area of the city by virtue of the current zoning. A denial would essentially amount to a taking at this point in time because it would be a decision by the city that this owner cannot use that property for any reason or that portion of the property for any reason at all, turning 1,650 square feet of that building into essentially a dead zone at this point in time. And that can't be good for the neighborhood, and it can't be good for the owner of the building either. As I said, we understand it's a difficult property, but leaving it dead is not a viable option for the city or the property owner. And keeping it commercial was not a particularly good use in that area anyway. The surrounding uses are all residential. I do note that there is a small restaurant business located nearby. I believe it's called Mexal Restaurant, a very small restaurant. But other than that, it's entirely residential. And this would make this property entirely residential. We can't do anything about the parking. The property was non-compliant with respect to parking before. It's going to continue to be non-compliant with respect to parking. We can't do anything with respect to the various dimensional control violations because the building takes up the vast majority of the lot, and it's impractical to try and remedy those dimensional control violations. You'd have to tear half the building down to make it compliant with setbacks and so on, and density, and so on and so forth. So while this is not an ideal use by any means, and we don't suggest it, it is. We do believe it's a better use, a more consistent use with zoning. It allows the owner to use the entirety of his property, and it's a use that doesn't conflict, at least with the spirit of the zoning and the nature of the zoning in the area, as Residence A. I have with me today, unfortunately, I could not bring the principal of Forty-One Warren LLC, Mr. Jamatro Shintari. He had a previously scheduled family vacation. But with me are Mr. Mateesh Rai, who is a business partner of Mr. Shintari, and Mr. Roy Lloyd, who is essentially the property manager at that location. They're available to address any specific questions or concerns Board members or anybody else might have. And we're happy to try to address them if the Board has any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So you're basically saying that there will be no change to the footprint? All the improvements will be in interior?
That's correct.
Is that only in the commercial space?
That's correct. Only in the 1,650 square feet representing the former commercial space in the building. This petition does not seek any anything having to do with the existing five residential units in the building already. They would remain exactly the same.
A couple of the issues that I see are obviously the parking, which I'm not sure what you can do about that. What's proposed is three tandem, six spots, three and three tandem, which certainly isn't an approved parking plan.
No.
But what I'd like to know is, currently leased, how many cars are associated with the property?
If I could ask one of the
If they could, name an address for the record, and please speak into the microphone.
Roy Lloyd, there's no one there's no one allowed to park there. So we have tenants, but they're not allowed to park.
So you have what is proposed as six spots, but you're not letting anyone park in there?
Yes, because at this time, we're doing construction on one of the units. So I thought it was going to be problematic because then they come in anytime, and then they will block the trucks from coming in. So I told them to park on the street.
When construction is complete, how many cars are associated with that property?
I don't know yet. It all depends.
Well, how many
What's it depend on?
Currently there? I understand
How many tenants?
How many tenants? And if you know, how many motor vehicles are used by the tenants that are there now?
I'd say about two.
So out of the five units you currently have, there are only two vehicles associated with it?
Yes.
How do you how do you explain to your tenants that there are six spots? And if you assign or if it's first come, first served, how do the tenants manage being blocked in?
Can you rephrase the question? I don't understand.
If you were to have more than two cars associated with the property?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Right now, you have five units there. You potentially might have six units.
Yes.
And you have six parking spots, of which four of them are blocked in. What happens if I pull in, someone else pulls in behind me, someone else pulls behind them? Is it agreed or explained to your tenants that they have to play musical cars?
Not really.
And how well-received is that?
If they come, let's say they come and just park for a little while and drop off something, that's fine. But as far as like parking there, let's say for overnight, no. I don't know if I answered your question.
Okay.
Yeah. So they could come and drop things off, let's say grocery or what have you. But I usually don't allow overnight parking.
Where do they park then?
On the street.
But right next to your building's no parking from your driveway to the corner? Nor can you park across the street from the driveway to the corner?
They could park across the street. There's side street that they could park on, and then there's a street at the back.
So they're dispersed throughout the neighborhood? Berry Street?
Yes.
Madison Street?
Yes.
Wherever they can find a spot?
Yes.
And if this sixth unit does come about, then any cars associated with that unit would also be pushed into the neighborhood?
Yes, but that could change. It all depends on what we're going to end up doing. That can change.
Well, if I can interject, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
The petitioner envisions a scenario whereby probably one or well, not one, two, maybe more, units are going to be given the right to park there. We recognize that having five or six units with parking for six but in two columns of three tandem parking is difficult to manage. It may very well end up being that the larger units in the building are given as part of their lease access to parking. But we can't give five or six units access to parking. It just doesn't, it doesn't work, especially if we're talking about the kind of parking that zoning calls for. You know, having 17 parking spaces is unrealistic. It's not going to work. But right now, they're in a bit of transition. They've, one tenant is empty. They're making some changes. They have another tenant leaving at the end of April. They recently concluded a another eviction action in Malden, a non-payment action, and they reached an agreement on that when that tenant can stay until the end of April, but they'll be leaving. They'll take the opportunity when that tenant is gone to do a little rehab work in that unit. But when the building is where they want it to be, meaning all the units are, whether it's five or six, and all the units have been upgraded, that's one of their plans, is to upgrade the units. They're not going to be able to offer parking to all five or six apartments in the building because it doesn't make sense. There are only six parking spaces, and they're, again, triple tandem. It would be musical cars, a tabori or fresh, Chairman. The expectation is that when they achieve the occupancy and all the work is done, and if they get the sixth unit by virtue of this, they're going to have to make a decision. Some units are going to be given, probably no more than two, access to parking in the rear. Others will not. But that's essentially what's going on right now. All the units are getting occasional use of the parking spaces, but it's impractical and unrealistic to have people parking, blocking each other in it. It just can't work. We recognize that. We're not trying to, you know, sell the Board something or give the Board the impression we don't understand the difficulties with the parking. But those exist right now.
Right. No, no, and I understand that. And what I was just trying to get a sense of, since you do have five units now and you have a few cars associated with it, what you are currently doing, and more importantly, how well was it working? What you're doing now? And it sounds like your answer is push them into the neighborhood.
To some extent. To some extent. As practical matter, if every unit has one or two cars, it's just not going to work, whether it's five units or six units in the building. It's not going to work. So
No, I understand that. I understand that.
But currently, it doesn't seem that there are a lot of motor vehicles associated with the current occupancy, but that can change. No one has a crystal ball. We can't be sure.
Right. Right. No, thank you for that. I would like to congratulate probably Mr. Lorden. Compared to 18 months ago, the lot itself appears to be in a lot better shape than it was 18 months ago. There's still a few shopping carts and propane tanks and things like that. But I was impressed to see how well it's been cleaned up since the last time you were before us. But it does lead me to my next question. When I was by there, I counted 12 recycling bins. There seemed to be six pairs of recycling bins, then a couple larger bins that aren't city-issued. But they were kind of haphazard along the side of the building, and then a couple were up on the porch. What is your plan for storing the recycling bins in trash going forward?
I arranged the trash for recycling and trash, but the tenants, they don't seem to follow. They do their own thing.
No, and that's fine. But I read in one of the reports that they were they're pictured on the deck. And when I was there, they were sort of along the side of the house. And I was just curious if you had plans once you're finished with your refurbishments and all the renovations, do you plan to store the recycling and trash bins on the first-floor deck? Or would you plan to keep them in the yard?
Keep them in the yard. My policy is to have nothing on the deck, just a clean deck.
I'd also point out that, again, tenants don't always follow the rules. The shopping carts that were observed should not be there. That tenant has been told you, and they belong to one of the supermarkets in the area. The tenant's been told that you can't bring shopping carts from Stop &amp; Shop and store them here. That's Stop &amp; Shop's property. The propane cylinder, they're not really sure. It's possible, again, that's one of the tenants put that out there. Now, that can't be brought inside anyway. But Mr. Lloyd, Mr. Shintari, or Mr. Rai, you know, they make their best efforts to try to get the tenants to follow the rules, be neat. It isn't always easy to do. And sometimes tenants do things that they're not supposed to. Mr. Lloyd was trying to make arrangements to get those shopping carts gone. He's been told by the tenant who brought them there that I guess it makes it easier for him or her to do their shopping when they just borrow the shopping cart and push it all the way over to the property. But and laundry, I guess. So again, the petitioner does the best they can, but he can't be there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, making sure a tenant doesn't, you know, put a recycling bin in the wrong spot or a shopping cart that shouldn't be there. He can only address it after it happens and try to get them to comply. And getting tenants to comply isn't always that easy. Sometimes tenants can be difficult, resulting in the need for court action. That's happened multiple times at this property.
Yep. No, no, I understand. It's just just a few questions I wanted to ask about that. I also noticed that the fence and the screening and the fence seems to be in disrepair. Is there any plans to replace or repair the fence with the budding property?
Yes. Once we're done with the construction, I think we'll do that next.
The construction you're currently doing or the potential additional sixth unit?
The construction we're currently doing.
Okay, thank you. Can you describe the unit? What you're going to do to the unit? I saw the plans and I saw the build-out. And I guess my questions are surround things like, how long will it take? Should you be approved? And that type of thing. Do you have a group that currently works with you regularly? Or will you have to go out and secure contractors and things of that nature?
Someone else is doing that. I'm not a construction person. That would be mostly, I believe, Jamatro.
Mr. Rai can address that question better for the Board.
Okay, thank you, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Mateesh Rai, 46 College Street, Stonem.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I brought in a contractor, and he said it takes about a month to convert that commercial property into a residential. So, you know, build up rooms, fix the toilet, stuff like that, and then also finish the basement so that we can put laundry and storage facility for the residents in the basement. And as far as the trash and recycling bins are concerned, if the Board has a recommendation for us, you know, we'd like to we'd take that into consideration. And if it's better left on the deck as opposed to on the yard, we would find a solution, you know.
Okay, thank you. It's just a number of bins there. And you've got a very small lot, less than 5,000 square feet. So you are limited in what you can do, you know, and
And the problem that I've been encountering with the current residents is that we help them get those labels that are on the, that are put on the bins. But the residents were telling me that somebody keeps coming and stealing them. So that's, that's so I don't know what else I could do. I could, we could potentially buy those blue bags and give them to the residents and then have them put them out on trash day. That's a solution. But yeah, I'm still struggling to find a really good solution for that when, you know, people are just taking the labels off.
If they scrape them off, does the Republic, do they leave it uncollected?
Yes. Yep. So if they don't see the label and we take the trash in the recycling bin out, they'll just leave them uncollected.
Yeah.
And so I've had to, on numerous occasions, I've had to sweep the sidewalk because the trash gets, you know, strewn around all along the sidewalk. And so, yeah, that's been the thing right now.
Right. Right. Okay. I had a few more questions written down. The fence, it's Okay, those are all the questions I had. Does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? Michelle, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Did they not? Sir, can you make sure you sign the clipboard? Oh, you did. Okay. And I saw the other gentleman do it. Yeah. Risha Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If this gets approved
If this gets approved and you do have new tenants in the in the new apartment, do you anticipate additional recycling and trash bins on the property?
Well, there would, assuming there are only five of each now, if the petition is granted, then there would need to be one more of each barrel for that residential unit. So it would be a total of 12, six trash and six recycling bins, one of each for each unit in the building.
And I think there's six of each there now.
So perhaps.
Plus two other big bit, bigger bins. I don't know if it exceeds Republic's requirement.
They're they're not authorized bins. Again, those those are from either an existing tenant or a previous tenant or something and probably will be removed at some point.
If they need to be removed, we can remove them.
Okay. Risha, does that answer your question?
Well, that if there are six and six, does that mean no more will be added or more could be added?
If if those, if there are already six of each and they're the appropriate kind of bins, then there would be no need to have any new bins introduced if the if the special permit is granted because there'd be one for each unit, one of each for each unit at that point, yes.
Thank you, it does answer my question.
Thank you. Ken Antenucci.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Do you know the distance from the units, from the building to the either the MBTA station or proximity to bus lines?
I would say a mile and a half, just guessing, guesstimation.
To the to the to the train and then bus route? Is there a bus route that runs right, right past the building, right? And your bus station close by, right? Okay.
You could get a the bus that goes from Medford to Malden T Station.
Yeah, goes right down.
I don't know the name of the of the bus.
So it does go right down Bedford Street, okay. And then you did mention the basement use. You want to refinish the basement and provide storage and laundry area?
Yes.
Now, is that, would that be for all six units?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And how would, you know, is is that accessible from within the building for all six units?
So what we're gonna do is if if we get permission to convert this commercial unit to a residential property, we're gonna put the, we're gonna put the front door where the window is right now and then build a hallway from that door that'll give access to the basement.
Okay, so that would go like across the front of the building, the Medford Street side?
So right now, right now where you see the front door, what we're gonna do is we're gonna break the wall. As soon as you enter the door, we're gonna break that wall, put a door there and build a hallway to get access to the basement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Stephanie Stone.
Thank you. I was wondering about the work without permits in the pictures that we have from 2020 to 2021. Does that work on this new space or other units?
That was illegal work being done by the tenant of the commercial unit issue in this hearing prior to them being evicted. And that was what prompted the action by the building department to shut down that business and ultimately resulted in a major dispute between the applicant and the tenant at that time that ended up in two, two court actions, one in district court and one in Superior Court. The petitioner has done nothing in that unit for years at this point in time. They're not permitted to do anything until they have proper permits. They understand that, so it's 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 lain fallow for, you know, four years at this point, five years, almost five years at this point.
Maybe even more.
So that, right, so that work has ceased and it's just, right? And you might have to redo some parts of it or something?
I'm sorry.
You might have to redo or take out some things that were done?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They'll have to clean, for lack of a better phrase, they'll have to clean things up down there and they'll have to do so in compliance with what the building department says needs to be done and that's their intention. But they haven't really touched anything and there's been no use of any kind in that portion of the building for close to five years at this point. So all of those orders and issues are are still outstanding with the building department. We suggest that they could be very quickly resolved if if the permit is granted and they do go forward on converting the unit. They'll they'll need to get fresh permits for everything they're doing down there at that point in time.
If this were not granted, would you go forward under the new law that would allow an accessory dwelling unit by right?
I haven't examined every aspect of it. I'm not sure a multifamily like this falls under it. It may, I'm not sure. I thought it might be limited to, you know, single and two-family homes in the city. But even if they did, they'd be restricted to 900 square feet, which would create, yes, a a smaller unit in that space, but you'd still be looking at a at a fairly large dead zone within there of another 700 or 800 feet, which, you know, is pointless, quite frankly. But if if denied and if they're not outright prohibited, it would be something they'd be looking at for sure. But it's it's not an optimal use of that property. And it makes what would otherwise be a decent-sized residential unit to a very, very small residential unit.
Right. And just finally on the trash storage, is it common for someone with a, you know, large unit building to have some sort of locked area for trash, given the issues with the trash sticker being stolen?
Is it common for someone?
To have a locked or secure area?
I I'm not really qualified to speak on what's common for multi-unit property owners. I I assume that some may have locked areas for it, but probably most don't. Most trash barrels and recycling barrels need to be easily accessible by tenants and these need to be, or maybe even not by tenants, maybe need to be easily accessible by property managers or whatever. And locking them behind gates or in rooms or something might not be the most common sense approach. But I I can't speak as a practical matter to how how common that would be or is.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
To explore Ms. Stone's question, since you're not fully utilizing the parking, have you given any thought to contracting trash removal and then using the front two spaces to have dumpsters or bins associated with it? That might be taken out by a contractor and.
The honest answer is they haven't given thought to that, I don't think, which is not to say that they couldn't give thought, but as they sit stand there tonight, they haven't thought much about that. Again, it's it's a little up in the air about how the parking area would be treated, whether this permit is allowed or a special permit is allowed or not. And it's it's if if it does end up being something where only one or two of the units in the building are afforded access to the parking area, that could free up space maybe for some outside storage, whether it's dumpster or or any closed area for for barrels. But it's all up in the air right now because they're not sure what they're gonna be able to do because this has been pending so long.
Right, and as I think about it, I believe there are rules associated with how close to the property line you can put a dumpster.
Yes.
So that might not be practical. Okay, Stephanie, you're all set?
Thank you.
Eric Henry, give me one second, Eric. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question, does anyone from ownership or management actually live on the property now?
No, can you repeat just?
Does anyone from management or ownership reside in any of the units on the property currently? Okay, then, so I did not get your residential address for the record. I know you wrote it, but I did not hear it.
Yes, I wrote it.
Why don't you tell?
550 Main Street, Unit 3, in Malden.
Okay. Speaking to the question of density, do you have any idea? How many people actually reside in the in the in the in the complete dwelling? How many people live there?
How many? All the units are occupied except the commercial space and one unit. So let me see, maybe 10 altogether?
10?
Yeah, because Unit 1, I believe, she has, I believe, three kids, a husband and maybe her sister staying there. I don't know the exact makeup of the the unit because we're kind of kicking it out, so probably I shouldn't speak too much about that.
Well, that Unit 1 is occupied. That's the unit that was the subject of a recent eviction matter in the Malden District Court that was resolved by agreement. That tenant will be vacating the property honor before April 30th. But that tenant is a woman, a spouse, and three minor children currently. So there would be five, if the if the sister's living there, she's not supposed to be. That's kind of one of the reasons why there was an eviction action brought, was unauthorized parties living in the unit. But there were five legitimate people living in that unit, two parents and three minor children. The other units aren't as densely occupied currently.
Yes, that's correct.
And one last question. So what, how are the places that stays, spaces that are designated as office spaces? How are they currently being used?
I don't think we have any office space, any office space designation.
Well, on on the plans, some of the units depict, you know, a home office space.
Oh, I see.
But do you have any notion of how those are being used at present?
Uh, no.
You you you're not sure how they're being used or are they are they being used for office space or bedrooms?
They're not being used.
They're just dead space in the apartment?
Can you rephrase the question again to make sure I understand correctly?
Two units have home, are listed as having home offices?
Yes.
Are they being used as offices?
No.
How are they being used?
For residential purposes only. So no one is currently using an office in any of the units?
Okay, so Unit 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 3 says it's a it's a two-bedroom and a home office.
Yes.
So is that now three bedrooms? And Unit 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 5 is two-bedroom same and and a home office. So is it three bedrooms?
Yeah, I would say three bedroom.
Ah. Thank you.
Joe Seder. Ken Antenucci.
Yeah, speaking to the bedrooms, I actually had a similar question. I mean, the existing, you have 14, I I believe I counted up 14 bedrooms.
That's what's shown on the plan.
On the on the on the existing plans is 14.
14 bedrooms are shown.
Adding three, which brings it to 17, which gives us that 17 required spots.
I counted those off the plans, yes.
Okay, so my question actually was similar to Eric's. You know, these office spaces, if these are actually being utilized as bedrooms or extra living space. I know you can't really answer that, but there, but it sounds like you have had problems with more than the number of people living in each unit than were allowed. So what what kind of controls or guarantees do you have on this sixth unit that there won't be? You know, it looks like you have three bedrooms, which ostensibly, say, one has a couple in it. That's four people, plus there's an an office. And it looks like in this sixth unit, there was, there's also an area where you walk in off the driveway. That's a, is that considered, is that gonna be like a vestibule or a mudroom or is that an actual room? Or is that just open and goes right into, it looks like it's just an open area you walk into and then walk through it into the kitchen?
He's talking about the the plan, so.
Yeah, so on the plan, off the stairs from the driveway, you walk in, there's gonna be a little office room there. And it's too small to be legally a bedroom when it's only got the one window. But is this gonna be just a walk-in area with no windows or anything that goes, that eventually leads into the kitchen?
This would be, this would be what you're suggesting, Member Antenucci. Again, and I know the board understands that when when a unit is rented, it often will be used in ways that it's not supposed to be used. It's used in ways that the tenant chooses to use it. Sometimes that's a bedroom, sometimes that's a study. The only I could say with respect to a particular room not being considered a bedroom is traditionally bedrooms have closets. So if you're gonna call a room something other than a bedroom, whether it's a den, a a home office, a study, whatever term you use to designate it, the distinguishing factor typically is if there's no closet, it's not really a bedroom. But that doesn't mean it can't be used as a bedroom because people will use a room the way they want to use a room or need to use a room. And you can tell a tenant, you're not supposed to use this as a bedroom and they'll, you know, nod at you and say, okay, but unless you're in there all the time, you're not sure how they're using it as a practical matter. But the goal is to make it not as easily used as a bedroom by, really, the only thing you can do is either it's too small to be a practical bedroom or it doesn't have a closet, which makes it difficult to use as a bedroom.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are you currently participating in the city's apartment inspection program? Rental unit inspection program?
Not necessarily with the city, but I have some institutional tenants and they do their own inspection. They have their own private company that would do inspection. And then I have Medford Housing, they would do their own inspection to, I believe, McCright, hopefully.
How many tenants, if any, are subsidized tenants, you know, utilizing a Section 8 housing voucher or some other subsidized?
I think I have about two, two or three.
Any any tenants who are who are recipients of a housing voucher, their units are subject to annual inspections in order to to make sure they meet minimum standards or else their housing voucher is suspended or or it's not able to be used for that unit until those are addressed. So every year, those tenants, an inspector comes out, identifies any problems, if there are any, and they're corrected so that the tenant can remain in occupancy and their voucher can continue to be used for it. But that applies to not not every unit in the building, but several of them right now.
Yes.
Right, okay, thank you. Michelle, can you speak to who is required to participate in the rental inspection program?
Yes, you're required to participate in the rental unit inspection program.
With the city?
Yes, with the city. So every time a tenant changes, the city's supposed to come out and do an inspection to make sure everything is in order and compliance with the code. That's been on the books for several years now. So that's definitely something you need to participate in. That's different from state inspections or local housing authority inspections or anything else that you you've mentioned. So that's required for you to be doing that.
The petitioner would would agree if the board is so inclined that if that were a condition of any allowance, that they would comply with that condition.
Yeah, it's it's actually the the law, so you have to, yeah, you have to do it, yeah.
Let me rephrase that. The tenant will comply with that municipal requirement regardless of the outcome of this hearing. But certainly if if the board is inclined to vote favorably upon the petition and include that as a condition, it certainly would be complied with under those circumstances.
Okay, Stephanie Stone.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, Eric was asking about the owner living in the building. And so neither gentleman here today is the owner of the property. The owner of the property is not here.
No.
Well, the owner is is a limited liability company, 41 Warren LLC, of which Mr. Jumantra Shanturi is the sole member and sole officer. Mr. Shanturi had a previously scheduled family vacation. He's overseas right now on vacation, but he didn't want to lose the opportunity for this hearing date. This matter has been languishing, and and not due to any problem of the board, but the matter's been languishing for a very long time, wanting to take the date that we got and take advantage of it. So I've asked the property manager, Mr. Lloyd, and Mr. Rai, who is Mr. Shanturi's business partner, but not officially a member of the LLC that owns the property, to be here tonight. I do apologize to the board that Mr. Shanturi couldn't couldn't be here, but he's away with his wife and his two children on a on a vacation that had been previously scheduled.
And and it looks like in 2006, there was an attempt possibly to make this into a unit. Was it the same owner at the time?
No, no, no. 41 Warren LLC acquired, became the record owner in literally very shortly before the pandemic broke out, I think in 2019. So he purchased the property in 2019 and then essentially immediately got into a dispute with the commercial tenant, found himself being sued in Superior Court along with this, with the seller of the property at that time, and then found himself dragging the tenant into Malden District Court in an eviction matter, all within about six months of acquiring title to the property. And then just a compound matter is the pandemic that descended upon us in in March of 2020. So it was a very difficult time for him.
Good, thank you.
Michelle, did you have anything?
Thank you, I had a couple of questions. So what work is going on now? You said there's work and construction going on in the other units. What exactly is being done?
I believe some remodeling.
Like what?
Kitchen, I think, but they're putting like tiles on the kitchen, kitchen floor.
Kitchen.
Which unit is being worked on, our unit?
Yeah, Unit 4.
Uh, Unit number four.
Okay.
On the third floor.
Third floor. Did you pull permits for the work being done?
I'm not the contractor.
Did you apply for permits?
I didn't apply, but I'm sure the contractor did.
Okay, because we're not finding anything in the system. I was just looking online and I spoke through text to the building commissioner. Any plumbing or electrical being done?
No.
Okay, so we're we're gonna, we'll look into that just to check, you know. But I I'm not seeing anything and I didn't see anything in preparation for this case. So if it's, if it needs a permit, you need to have a permit. Your contractor needs a permit.
Of course.
Okay. What about this new hallway going through the unit? It's not shown on the plans and my question is, is it, is it, is the unit not going to be 1650 because there's gonna be a hallway running through it? You said the door's moving and there's a hallway gonna be installed to provide basement access? And I'm not seeing that anywhere on the plan. So do you have a revised plan with you or?
I brought the contractor on Sunday, I'm sorry, the architect on Sunday, and we discussed this plan. And he actually texted me saying that he's gonna have a redrawn plan by Monday afternoon, latest.
Okay, so.
So next Monday.
Okay, so if the board grants a special permit, it would be approving the plans that you submitted? Unless you could give, you know, certain specificity as to what would need to be changed. This plan that you submitted would be the one approved, which doesn't have a hallway. It shows certain layout and size. So do you have any idea how big this hallway would be? Is it is it gonna be the length of the building, for example? Could you, you know, come up with any, do you have any sense of that? Because that would be important for the board to know if they grant a permit.
Yeah, so it's going to be, there's gonna be a door here, right? This is the basement. The hallway's gonna be like right here.
Well, if if you're observing, if you're looking at the plans before the board right now, Sheet A1, the basement entrance is for the proposed floor plan for on Sheet A1 on the left. The basement and the front door access is in the center of it. And I don't know if the board can see that. A narrow corridor would be constructed right there that would allow access to it. So I assume it would be the the minimum width called for by the code for a hallway, three feet or something like that, just enough room to allow access. But that would necessarily reduce the size of the of the proposed unit by whatever the math works out to. Three feet by 20 or 30, maybe 50 or 60 feet. I could suggest that, again, if the board is so inclined and given that Mr. Rai has indicated that a a new plan will be available from the contractor, I could suggest and request that if the board is so inclined to grant that we be, that the grant be subject to submission. that the grant be subject to submission of a revised floor plan, Sheet A1, depicting that corridor that is to be built so that, you know, it's on the plan that's approved by the board and everyone on the board can see it. But it's not going to be anything other than what's being represented tonight, a corridor that would be the minimum width called for in order to provide access to that area.
Okay, and I'm sorry, who, the corridors to provide access just for that unit or for all units to get to the basement?
It'd be for all units in the building.
Okay, so then, is it gonna change the access door to the unit?
Yes.
So there won't be a door going into the living room?
So, so right now, the door is on the side. We're gonna close this door and then put the door, so we haven't decided if it's gonna be here or here.
So you're talking about the Madison Street side for the door?
We're gonna close the Madison side door and put a door on the Medford side.
Okay.
So we don't know if the door will be exactly facing Medford or along the hallway.
Okay.
But currently, do all five units have access to the basement, direct access to the basement? Because I read at one point that there's two accesses to the basement, one in a unit and one from the parking lot.
Can you repeat the question again?
How do people get into the basement from the current five units?
At this point, they don't have access to the basement because all the electrical unit is in the apartments, so there's no need to be in the basement.
Okay, so no one can get to the basement from any of the five existing units?
Ninety-five Medford Street could get into the basement because they have a back door that leads directly into the basement.
Okay, so that's the one they said that can be accessed from a unit? And to get into the basement, you can only get it from that door in the driveway?
Yes. Yes, that's the unit. That's Ninety-five Medford Street, and that's adjacent to the commercial unit. In fact, they share a wall.
And with this new corridor being talked about, all six units would be able to access the basement through that corridor?
I think so.
Yep, so you come down the stairs and then walk through the corridor to get access to the basement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My other question has to do with the parking. So when this board looked at the case as far back as the same property in 2006, there was a sign posted, "No parking." And the owner at the time came in and said the same thing you said, they don't allow tenants to park. So are you saying you don't ever allow tenants to park? Or it's only during construction, or it's not overnight? Or I heard you say a few different things, and I just want to clarify because that big sign is still posted, "No parking allowed."
Yes, you're correct on the sign. I don't usually allow the tenants to park, but I don't really enforce it, enforce it. So it's not a strict enforcement, but I rather them not park.
Okay, because there's a city ordinance that requires you to allow tenants to park if you have off-site, if you have onsite parking.
Correct.
You're supposed to allow the residents or the people at the property, the occupants, to park there. So you can't actually say you can't park there?
Correct, but one of the problem is the owner wanted a fee, and the tenants kind of hesitate on paying a fee to park on the lot. The owner want to be paid.
Okay, so I'm not sure about that, but I'm just letting you know there's an ordinance that requires you to allow the occupants to park there, whether that's for a fee or not. So because of what, like the chair was saying, then it pushes the parking out into the neighborhoods.
Okay, no problem. I'll allow them to park, no problem.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So going forward, we can honor that, right? I mean, if it's a city ordinance to allow parking. So the other thing that I also did was, when I brought in the architect, I also brought in the contractor to redo the parking lot, put a new asphalt, and then also the fence. So once that is done, and we can have a, some kind of a rule in place where we can pick which units are gonna be allowed parking and give that space, leave that space for residential parking.
Okay, yeah.
And then take that, and take that sign down.
Yeah, and just so you know, you know, and the board is aware, because it was this board that reviewed the case previously. The previous owner was required to allow the tenants to park there as well. That was a condition of a permit. So I just, I guess my concern is, you know, it's not just you agreeing here to do it because you want the permit. It's an enforceable condition. You can be, you know, you need to follow it. So you're gonna, you're gonna be repairing and repaving the parking lot?
Yes, ma'am.
You gonna do any markings, striping lines so people would know where to park or?
Absolutely, yes. That's the plan because right now, the way it is, it's gonna be hard for people to figure out how to park, you know, and have that space, leave that enough space for the car parked behind. So that's the reason why we're gonna redo the space and mark it.
As I said earlier, the expectation is that, because the property cannot accommodate parking for five or six units, a decision will need to be made that some units will have parking rights as part of their rental agreement with the landlord, and it probably will be something like two units getting two spaces each as a practical matter. Again, tenants often do what they want, often park their cars where they want to, whether, as has been brought up at this hearing, no one's a resident, none of the owners or the owner's agents are actual residents of the property. They're there frequently, but they're not onsite 24 hours a day. They're certainly not onsite overnight. People are probably just gonna park their cars where they want to. But they do envision having probably two units in the building having express parking rights as part of their rental agreement with the landlord. I think that's what Mr. Rye meant with respect to money, is that if you want to park and you're renting, it's gonna cost a little bit more to have a parking space than if you don't have a parking space. That's not an uncommon practice among residential rentals. And it really is the only practical way to deal with parking. You just can't give everybody who rents a unit in that building now or after this hearing, if an additional residential unit is granted, you can't give them all parking. There isn't enough space, and it doesn't work. So they'll do the best they can, but there are gonna be some winners and some losers when it comes to the ability to park at that property. It's just the nature of the beast.
So I just had a couple more questions.
Ronnie wanted to weigh in if you.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I can wait.
I'm not sure if we missed the window on Ronnie's question. Ronnie Verma.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had some questions. Does the building have a fire prevention or notification system currently? Does it have sprinklers, hornstrokes, pole stations, anything like that right now? What does it have for fire prevention or fire notification?
Yes, we have active, sorry, fire alarm system, I believe with AFA.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, how are the utilities kind of broken up? Do the tenants pay electricity, water, sewage? I guess how is that all broken up? How is that metered and who's paying for that right now?
It's all separately metered, so the water, utility, the tenants pay.
Okay, so you'll be adding an electrical meter and basically meter out this additional apartment if it does get approved?
Yes.
Okay.
I imagine it's already separately metered. It has been occupied for many years in the past, so I assume there's separate electric and gas. I want to correct Mr. Lloyd. I don't think that water and sewer is separately metered. It's probably one water, sewer, I think, but electric, gas, cable, phone, those are all separately metered to every unit, including the commercial unit that hasn't been used for almost five years now.
So are all these meters in the basement of this building? So do you have six electrical meters and six gas meters in the basement of that building?
Yes, and one for the common area.
Okay. Okay, that covers that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, I just had one, two quick questions. So how often are you there as the property manager?
I try to go there every day. I go in the day and I go at night to see what's going on.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, that can be added to any building that has a dwelling in it already. Would you, have you given any consideration if this permit's granted for the sixth unit to add a seventh unit as it allowed ADU?
I can answer that. The answer to that is no. And I think that if this petition is granted, there's really no place to put another unit. I mean, there is the parking area in the back, but this petitioner has no plan at this time and no expectation of expanding the building anymore than it already is. Part of the selling point, so to speak, of this petition is, again, we're not expanding an already problematic property on a very small lot. We're just converting existing interior space from one use to another, and we're hoping that that is more palatable to the board. And we know the ADU is out there, but this is not a property that lends itself very easily to another unit of any kind that's gonna take up more space on that frankly tiny little lot. So that's a hard no.
In terms of splitting some of the units, reconfiguring the units within, they're large units. You have several four-bedroom units. This one proposed is 1600. So there's, I mean, I'm just, I'm curious. I mean, you may not know, the owner may change his mind. It is allowed by right. So I was just curious if you had any thought behind that, or a future owner could do it.
This, again, this petitioner has not indicated to me anything along those lines. In fact, we delayed a little bit in terms of asking for this to be finally given once the unpaid water bill issue was straightened out, this matter being given a date to see what shook out, so to speak, with the ADU change to zoning. But this petitioner looked at it and said, no, I think I just want to go with what I've wanted to go with before the zoning change occurred, which was keep this. There are larger units, some of them, but, you know, that's a good thing. Sometimes people need larger units. Again, one of the tenants right now is a married couple with three children. It's hard to find three- and four-bedroom apartments, but when you have that many kids, you need that many bedrooms. So the plan right now is to keep it the way it is and seek only the change in use for the existing layout. Could a future owner change? Yeah, yeah, sure.
And on that note, do you, to Eric's question, so there's 14 bedrooms and five units. How many people live at the property? Not the five that were evicted or in the process of being evicted, the wife, husband, and three kids. How many people are in the other units in other, out of 14 bedrooms?
I believe unit two, I believe three, and then, I mean, unit two, about three. And unit three, I believe a family of five.
So unit one has five, unit two has three.
Yes.
Unit three has five.
About that, yes.
And what's in unit number four?
And then Ninety-five, it's a mother and a daughter. Ninety-five Medford Street.
Okay, and who's in, how many in unit five?
Two, a mother and a daughter.
That's unit four.
So there's Ninety-five.
Oh, so there's two that have a mother and a daughter?
Yes. Wait a minute, hold on, hold on. So there's Ninety-five Medford, it's a mother and a daughter. Then you got unit two with three tenants. And then unit one, there's a family of about five.
Yeah.
And then unit, I believe, three is a family of five. Unit four, it's vacant at this time. Unit four, the commercial unit is vacant at this time.
So commercial and unit four are vacant?
Vacant, yes.
Thank you. Michelle, did you have any other questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Counselor, would you have anything else you'd like to present?
Yeah, sure.
So on the office space, I didn't understand in the beginning, but only rooms with a closet are used legally. The office space or the kitchen, I'm not sure how the tenant used it, but only the rooms with closets are used as residential spaces legally.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. That, oh.
Sorry, please.
Oh, Eric Henry.
We, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have people on the board that are very much more adept at reading plans and things of this nature. But the way I understand this plan, both of these units that list offices have closets.
Yeah, and if I could clarify.
The office.
Sorry, the closet doesn't make it a bedroom. That is not what makes it a bedroom. Okay, thank you.
So.
Go ahead.
Well, what makes it a bedroom?
It's based on sanitary code, the size. It has to have adequate light, ventilation, a point of egress, and it has to be a certain size. I believe it's 70 square feet per individual. It's not the presence of a closet that legally makes it a bedroom. It's building in sanitary code criteria and height of ceiling as well. What else?
And that's how I understand it.
Okay, so let me just close the loop with B. So can any one of these things, units that list an office space, for all of the requirements that would have them be a bedroom, could they, would they meet those requirements?
I mean, I, looking at the size alone, it looks like it would meet it. I can't speak to ceiling height or the window, the glazing, but I believe when this plan previously came forward, some of the rooms were labeled office because of the concern with them being used as a bedroom. So what happens is this plan, if it's approved, that room labeled office is only supposed to be used as a home office. We don't know that it's not being used as a home office until somebody goes in and does the inspection and says, no, that's actually a bedroom. So then they'd say you're using it in violation of the plan, and somebody meaning one of the building inspectors, a health inspector. So I believe that is, and we've seen that on other petitions as well, a three-bedroom is now a two-bedroom because now one of the rooms is labeled office. But, you know, we're not, we'd only go into the unit during the rental unit inspection process or if there's a complaint or an issue. So you would approve a plan that says that room may only be in office, but the fact of the matter is, we can't, you know, can't necessarily regulate it easily or monitor it, I should say.
Thanks for that point of clarification. I yield.
Risa Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a similar question, and Michelle answered it, and so I'm all set.
So you're all set?
Thank you.
Ken Antinucci.
I'm sorry.
So you're all set? Okay, so Counselor, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, that concludes the petitioner's presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. At this, at this point, we will entertain anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. If you'd like to speak in favor, feel free to come up to the podium, give us your name and residential address for the record, and sign the clipboard, please. Anyone to speak in favor. Diane, do you have anything to read in favor?
I do.
Very good. Let me click on your microphone.
I have an email dated Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, to the members of the Molding Planning Board. We are writing to support the conversion of space of 91-93 Medford Street with conditions. We would like to see that space be put to productive use as a residential unit after several years of vacancy. There is so much housing need, and this would be an appropriate use in this neighborhood. We suggest that this approval be conditioned on several items. The owner must provide a more sanitary trash and recycling area in the back. The project should include the installation of a bollard or other intervention at the corner of Medford and Madison Streets to protect the building and pedestrians from vehicles, given the tight geometry. Finally, the conduit along the side of the building, currently loose, is a safety hazard and should be more safely contained. The city is investigating and cleaning up the streets and sidewalks in our neighborhood. This vacant space at 91-93 Medford Street has. This vacant space at 91-93 Medford Street has been an eyesore, so we hope the planning board supports its improvement as a new unit of housing. Sincerely, Alexandra Ofyong Boris Hernandez, 221 Madison Street, Malden. Also in support of this email is Shannon and Brendan McDowell of 100 Medford Street in Malden, Carrie Materi and David McConnell of 106 Medford Street, Malden, and Kristen and Chris David of 226 Madison Street, Malden. And that's it.
So was that one email, or was that several emails?
That was one email, but 3 people sent emails supporting that email because they were all CC'd on each other.
Okay, thank you.
The original email CC'd these people, and they all wrote back they're in support.
Okay. So if there's no one else that would like to speak in favor, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Peg Crowe. I live at 9 Hancock Street, and I'm the Ward 1 City Counselor. And these are some of the neighbors, actually. Alexandra, who wrote the email, and the, came here in full support. You know, it really intended to support this conversion, just given the, it has been empty for a long time. The, I was reluctant to support it in any way, but talking to the neighbors and trying to see what could be used for, like general office space or retail sales, but then when you look at retail sales, what that includes is, you know, hair salons, barber shops, you know, dog groomers, laundromats, and just a couple of blocks up there in the Bell Rock area, square area. I was just walking the dog. There's 8 barber shops, or we have an abundance of what is there. So that conversion, to us, felt like a really good use. However, after listening to sort of the petitioner and some of the questions that no one's allowed to use parking, and we knew that there was going to be a deficiency anyway, but we were, you know, in agreement with that, with some of the other things, knowing that there, you know, the open space and the density, no matter what goes in that, that unit there, the vacant area, it'll still have the same deficiencies. So the parking was really the big idea. Trash was in, one of the reasons we were going to be here really in support of a special permit is to be able to get some controls over some of the things that are concerns for the neighborhood. Again, it was mentioned trash a few times. It is notoriously, even not just after trash day, lots of trash on the Madison Street side, although I did see someone sweeping up the other day on Monday, so I was very pleased. It does look a lot cleaner, but it always happens. And we had rodent issues over there, and that had, that was, the Board of Health said that has been taken care of, but the trash issue is just a welcome sign for the rodent. So we needed to get, we wanted to get control of that in some way. The safety issues, as we said, that, that corner has been, that cars have gone through that front door on the corner. So, you know, trying to see if we could petition for some, I'm not sure a bollard would actually be feasible because of the light poles and the, like, in the kitty corner of Madison and Medford, and it would probably impede ADA. So, but seeing if there was other, some safety issues around crosswalks or some of those other things. But again, I think really not understanding exactly what's going on in that building, I think we're going to reserve our right, our, you know, our support actually going forward until, you know, maybe work. And if they, people cannot park there because they have contractors, that seems significant work that should be permitted. They're not just painters going in, I think. I don't know that to be true, but there seems to be way too many unanswered questions and what could happen and what couldn't happen to actually warrant our support tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could all sign the.
Yep.
Clipboard. Right, well, that's why I was just going to actually ask that, Eric, because we have, one of the ladies submitted a letter in favor. Is that being recanted, or? Hold on a second. Thank you.
106 Medford. Until more clear answers are able to be provided by the property manager and partner, I am taking back my approval.
Right, but you can't speak for the people that were CC'd?
No, I am, I am one of the names on that email, but I cannot speak up for anyone else.
Could you repeat your name again? Sorry, I didn't catch it.
Carrie Materi.
You said 106 Medford?
Yes. And I am Shannon McDowell. I'm also on that email. We were in support until some of these questions were also, I would be in support of if they could get more clarification. So, and I'm at 100 Medford Street, and I was on that email as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Diane, do you have anything to read in opposition?
I do not.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing and hearing no one else in opposition, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report and recommendation?
Yes, and I also just do want to note, we also did receive an email from Chris Webb, Director of Public Health, Board of Health. I had asked, and I was just trying to find it, I had asked for an update on the status of the rodent extermination, and that we had heard about a couple of years back, and he reported that everything has been resolved. So.
Okay, thank you.
Or, I'm going to find the email. It didn't say resolved. It just said that the work has been ongoing, so it's.
I saw a few traps out there when I was out there earlier.
They were there, you know, a couple of years ago, too, so. It's, I'm going to find the email. It's in here. It said, actually, let me just look it up quickly. I can tell you exactly what it said. I had said, please let me know the status, and this was with respect to trash rodent control extermination, and the email dated March 10th stated, this rodent problem has been addressed for some time now. Okay. And that was from Chris Webb, Director of Board of Health, Public Health. So I'm reading from the planning report and recommendation dated March 12th, 2025. I won't read it verbatim into the record. It is incorporated here and by reference to the record, incorporated into the record here and by reference. Let me see. This, I've given you the breakdown of the existing units and proposed unit sizes, number of bedrooms, locations, any other additional rooms, square footage. All this information was taken off the plans that were submitted. You have a copy of those plans. You also have a copy of the revised site plan, which, so, so that you know, in your package, you have an original folder, which was all the information originally submitted in 2023, as well as photos that I had taken, site photos back then. And then you also have, in, on top of that, you have new information. So you have the new site plan that was submitted, new photos that I took last week. But you should refer to what I'm calling the original package because that's where all the floor plans are. Zoning and occupancy, the property is classified as part of the residency zoning district. We heard about a similar special permit in 2006, also a similar proposal that was denied previously by this board. Previous use of the storefront was industrial. It has been vacant more than 2 years. General office or retail services use may be allowed by special permit as a conversion of a pre-existing non-conforming property. The existing multifamily dwelling use up to 3 stories is prohibited in this district. It predates the current ordinance. It is pre-existing non-conforming. This proposal that you're hearing tonight may be allowed by special permit as an, as an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use and/or as a residential conversion of a non-conforming property. We heard about the accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which went into effect after the current petition was filed. City zoning was amended in accordance with the new state law. An accessory dwelling unit may be constructed by right at the property. There is a maximum size, 900 square feet. No parking is required. Site plan review would be required. But again, that would be allowed by right. And just to note, that's whether this permit is allowed or it's not allowed. So ADU, accessory dwelling unit can be added to any building where there's an existing dwelling. So whether this is a 5-family or 6-units, the option is still there. The director butler to the west is a mixed-use building with 2 residential units and a restaurant. To the north, a 2-family dwelling. The abutment to the east, on the other side of Madison Street, is a 2-family dwelling. To the south, on the other side of Medford Street, a 3-family dwelling. Surrounding land use is residential, mostly 2-family dwellings, some 3-family and an occasional single-family. Bell Rock Cemetery and a multifamily dwelling with 94 units, that's the Robinson Cuticura Building. In terms of dimensional controls, the building, the existing building grossly violates all dimensional controls except rear yard setback. It is considered pre-existing non-conforming. This proposal increases violations of density and open space, maintains all other violations. I've given you the breakdown. I'm not going to go through all of these. In terms of open space, for the 5 units, 1,250 square feet is required. For 6 units, 1,500 square feet of open space is required. There is no open space. So the 100% efficiency is existing or under the proposal. Also, in terms of density, the density violation increases from 35% to 46%. In terms of number of spaces, the existing multifamily requires 8 spaces under applicable requirements, which were 1.5 spaces per unit. The site plan does depict 6 parking spaces in the rear yard. The property is considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposal for 6 units with 17 bedrooms requires 17 spaces, 1 per bedroom. The proposal increases the deficiency from 2 to 11 spaces, or 25% to 65%. Parking layout, there are 6 spaces depicted on the plan. There are the conforming size. It is a non-conforming triple tandem configuration. There are no parking aisles. The parking is paved. It's unmarked, unlined. There's driveway access via the curb cut on Madison Street. There is a snow storage area depicted on the site plan along the northern property line. It doesn't meet the requirement for 6 spaces. It's 175 square feet, as opposed to the required 240. Screening, there is the required screening of abutting residential uses of this parking area. We did hear that the fence is in need of repair and maintenance. You can see that in some of the pictures. This is along the northern and western property lines. Trash storage, we've talked about. There was also lack of adequate storage observed a few years back when I visited the site. It's the same situation. I saw 10 barrels, 5 in 5, 5 recycling, 5 trash. Also saw the shopping carts and another barrel and some other stuff. The site plan that's been submitted shows trash containers under deck, or it's labeled trash containers under deck, 6 by 8 feet, 48 square feet. And that's the ground-level rear deck. So according to the site plan that they've presented, that is where the trash containers would be stored. We have heard from the property manager that he doesn't support that plan. So in that area, isn't being used for storage of the trash, and it doesn't look like it would be large enough for the 10. Rodent control, we talked about. The work without permits, we talked about. I will note that all work in orders, this is per the building commissioner, all work in orders to correct or remove the work are on hold pending the result of the special permit petition. So no work is supposed to be going on in the basement right now. No work was ordered to be removed. There was a cease and desist order issued, so no work should be going on. And once, whether this permit's granted or not, then they will need to seek permits to do what they need to, to correct that work without permits. I think that's everything. The finding required to grant the special permit, you would need to make this finding, that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. The recommendation, which was prepared prior to the public hearing, provided the board does not make the required finding, is that the petition for special permit be denied given the proposal exacerbates existing gross deficiencies of open space, density, and parking.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Diane Chuha.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question for Michelle or for the owners, but I was looking at the pictures, and there's a door off the driveway. Does that go right into the basement?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, the door off the driveway goes right into a basement. So it's, yes, perfect, okay. Is that the door into the?
Basement or into the back of the unit?
Well, there's 2 doors, so.
Oh, are you talking about the white door?
I'm talking about, it's got like a little roof over it.
Okay.
This door here.
Okay.
Does that, is it, so there's a door that goes directly into a basement?
Yes, it goes into the basement.
Okay, so that's kind of where I was thinking they could put the recycling bins and so forth. There's an accessible.
Okay, you all set? Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle, I was curious, since the commercial permit has lapsed, so whether, if this is, say, for the, this is not approved tonight, what recourse, I understand that they could probably come back in 2 years with another petition, or is, but the opportunity for a commercial use for this building is permanently gone?
No, that's not correct. What lapsed was the most recent industrial use.
Okay.
And hearing, which I didn't know some of the details of this lawsuit, I'm not even sure if that lawsuit would have told that lapse period. I would have to talk to the building commissioner. But let's presume that the industrial use has lapsed.
Okay.
They have the right under current zoning to apply for a special permit to convert that space to a general office or retail service, or residential. They've chosen residential. That's how they're here tonight. It's, they would have, again, general offices or retail services. Those are the 2 options, or residential for a pre-existing non-conforming property. So the 2-year, waiting 2 years would be to come back with the same or essentially the same petition. If they wanted to come back with a proposal to add a 6th unit, so on its face, it looks the same, they could come to this board, and if you found that there were material differences in the plan, so that address the reasons for the denial, so if this is denied tonight, and it was, you stated a specific reason it was denied, and they show you a plan that's addressing that reason, you have the opportunity to review the new plan and determine whether they don't have to wait the 2 years, that you think it's different enough that they can come back. If you find it's the same plan, and it hasn't addressed any of the reasons, that's when the 2-year period would go into effect. So they have the option to try to come back sooner than 2 years. The other thing is that's, if it's an unfavorable decision. So a denial is unfavorable, or a withdrawal with prejudice is unfavorable. A withdrawal without prejudice is not considered unfavorable. They could come back at any time. If that were to go, I'm not saying we're talking about that, but I just want to let you know that these are the different options. you know that these are the different options. So I think, was that it? You said that you were asking about the two years? Was that everything?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Stephanie Stone.
Yeah, one of my questions, right, was around procedurally, because we tabled this before, so we can sort of table-ish again, or say, come back with a better plan, but it's not a denial, let's say, and it doesn't have to be two years when they come back next.
Right, if you want to table it or continue it, if you want to give them the chance to revise plans or provide additional information, you can do that. That's the board's decision. You've held the hearing. I would recommend if you do that and you're going to receive a new information, you're also going to continue the hearing, so that the public would have a chance to review the new plans, make any comments, city officials, et cetera. That has nothing to do with the two years. That's, the case would remain active. But if you're going to do that, I would also recommend that you specify exactly what you're looking for, like you did on another petition. We want you to eliminate a bedroom. We want you to do this or do that. So you should be very specific about what you're looking for. It has been two years since this was previously tabled. That is a long time. Typically, you don't do that, but it wasn't necessarily you're doing. There was an issue, as the petitioner mentioned, with the taxes. So if they had come back sooner than that, it would have been a mandatory denial. That's why there was a water lien, there was a tax issue. That's why it prolonged. You originally tabled it so they could revise the site plan, which they did within a matter of a couple months. But then, once the tax lien issue was discovered, was put on hold to give them the chance to resolve it, which just literally happened this past month. I wouldn't recommend that. So if you think it's going to take longer than, you know, a quick turnaround to revise plans or address anything, you know, be wary of that, how long. A month or two is one thing, you know, but.
And I just wanted to clarify on the parking rules you were saying. If there are, I know it's a grossly deficient parking amount, but if there is parking, you can't say, as a landlord, you cannot park their tenant. You have to allow parking. But could you say only certain units have designated spots because they're bigger or whatever?
Yes, that would be your right as a private landlord to regulate your parking. But there is a city ordinance that says any property with onsite parking is required to use it. It's not just multi-families, anybody. We see this sometimes with single or two families as well. They don't allow, it's rented and they don't allow tenants and, you know, to park in. But that's a different ordinance. That's not the zoning. So that's a different enforcement issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Michelle? If not, is there a motion? Ken Antinucci.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make that motion to table, to give the petitioner the opportunity to address some of the issues that were brought up this evening, and reopen the public hearing for comment. And those issues that they should address would be revising the drawings to show the egress and access plans to get to the basement, also to show the plans on how the basement is going to be finished.
Hold on one second, I'm writing this down, okay? Revised drawings to show basement access.
Shared basement access, right?
Shared basement access, and what was, go ahead.
The finished plans for the basement itself. Address any trash, the question's on trash management, storage and screening.
Storage and screening of trash?
Yes.
So when you say address, do you want them to propose?
Propose, propose, storage and screening onsite. Or at least, yeah, storage doesn't necessarily, we don't have to do the whole commercial dumpster pickup or anything, but just some plan, something on the plan that shows how they're going to manage the trash.
Proposed storage and screening, plan to manage trash. On that note, if I could, Chair, I've wanted to mention, the dumpster, as you mentioned, is not allowed within 20 feet of a property line.
Right.
So I don't believe there's any spot on that site where you could actually put a dumpster that would comply with the zoning. Now, this board can grant relief on that if you wanted to allow a dumpster on a property line, but dumpsters do need to be screened. They need to be enclosed and screened, and that goes through Board of Health, so that's something else, okay?
I realize that after I proposed it as an option, that I started thinking with the Board of Health issues.
Okay, so you're not saying dumpster, though, Ken?
No.
You're talking about trash barrel storage?
Yeah. And actually, it could also indicate, should have asked this before, but what street does the trash go out on? Does it get picked up off of?
I believe it's Madison.
Madison.
I've seen it on Madison. It's in the pictures on Madison, too.
Also, something that clearly either explains or depicts the parking allowances and how those will be allotted to the units.
So the assignment to, what did you say, assignment?
Accessibility to parking for the residents, and how they'll be either allotted or whatever. I mean, I understand that that tandem parking is really, doesn't meet any, any regulations. If you try to make it make regulations, you'd probably only end up with maybe three spots. So if they can come up with some type of plan that shows us how you can manage the traffic or the parking, or how you're going to allot those, because as Michelle said, I mean, you can't not allow people to use those spots.
Anything else, Ken?
Any, just exterior site or site improvements or fencing improvements, just make a note of that. And then also, if you can clarify the, what kind of smoke fire detection and/or suppression systems you have in the, in the building for all apartments.
You all set? Well, before, before you finish, I want to ask Michelle a question. Is it, is it appropriate to put one of the follow-up items as, meet with the council, the councilor and the neighbors about the issues they had? I've been on this board a long time, and it's the first time I've ever seen someone give testimony in favor and then recant it.
Okay, yes. Do you can, you can request that they hold a neighborhood meeting with the city councillor?
Yes, you can have that, have that, please.
Okay.
And then Eric Henry had a question, Ken.
I just wanted to, if Ken was so inclined to be able to add, being able for the petitioner to be able to show their permits for the work that they're doing that's currently going on there?
Yes, yeah, if you can include that as well, Michelle.
So you mean the work they're doing in the other units that they said they're doing, okay. Okay, so show or apply for permits? Is that what you mean? Okay.
You all set, Eric? Okay. So Ken's made a motion to table with a bunch of items that we want to get back from the petitioner. Is there a second for that motion?
This is tabling the hearing as well.
Tabling the hearing as well, so you could reopen the hearing.
Risa Gray.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so this is to table the public hearing to allow the petitioner the opportunity to address these issues. I have eight issues. I don't need to read them, do I?
No.
Okay.
As long as the petitioner understands.
I will give them this in writing.
Yes. Okay, give me a second to start queuing people up. Okay, whenever you're ready, Michelle?
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Risa Gray? Patrick Hayes?
No.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Yes. Ronnie Rajrama? Chuck Iovin?
No. So it passes six, two.
Do you want me to notify the butters of the tabled hearing date?
Yes.
Okay. Publication won't be required, but I will post with the city clerk, and the butters will be notified by mail.
Okay, so this matter's been tabled, and it sounds like you have some work to do, both for the city and for the councillor and the neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Diane, if you could start reading the next hearing that we have, 578 Main Street.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March 12th, 2025, tabled on February 12th of 2025, on the petition of Guardian Angel Senior Services, Inc., on behalf of 578 Main Street LLC, permit application number C00-609827-2024, made under Title 12.28.010.D. of the Code of the City of Malden, to amend the special permits granted in case number 96-43 and case number 93-18, namely, to amend conditions on the special permits which allow medical center use and to allow general office use of pre-existing non-conforming existing property in the Residence B zoning district at the property known as and numbered 578 Main Street, Malden, Mass., and also known by city assessors' parcel ID number 049279926.
Thank you very much, Diane. Michelle, let me know when you're ready. Very good. Councillor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thomas Callahan with offices at One Center Street here in Malden. I have with me tonight Otto Flores, who's construction manager, and David Clovey, who's the property manager, in case there's any questions about the current use of the property. I represent Dan Lewis and Guardian Angel Senior Care, and they're the prospective buyers, so we don't have the intimate knowledge we might have if we own the property and we're managing it currently. Guardian Angel Senior Care is, just as its name purports, is a, is a senior care service in the home, and they have been in business since 2003 with a number of offices around They intend to have their offices, if this permit were granted, they intend to have their offices onsite, take about 3,000 square feet in the building, and therefore, they would be an onsite owner, which I think is a benefit. But we're here to amend the 1993 and 1996 special permits, which in, in some ways, to use the term loosely, have grandfathered certain rights to the property. What we would like to do, and what we think is all positive, and there's really no negative, is to add general office to the medical use that's currently allowed. And why I say it's all positive is because that, the general office use is less intensive than medical office use, so that that would be, that would benefit the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. The 93 and 96 special permits call for four spaces per thousand for the medical office use, which is different than the current standard. But we look to retain all of the rights in that, in that 93 and 96 special permits, again, just adding general office to the, to the allowed uses. This is in Residence B zoning district, which does allow, we're seeking to amend the two, the two special permits, but if it were a just a petition outright, the zoning does contemplate in Residence B that general office could be allowed by special permit. I just point that out to you. We have spent some time looking at the site, and I've done a parking survey, which I'll speak to later, but we think the site is functioning very well right now from any number of perspectives, particularly parking. That is, we feel we have ample parking there now, and my client is sincerely hoping that the, any restrictions or conditions would be minimal, again, because he's proposing a positive here in terms of general office use, but also that the site is functioning very well. I'm going to ask Dan Lewis to step up and just give you a several-minute summary of the, of Guardian Angel services, service, Guardian Angel, I'm sorry, Senior Care. I think it's important to understand what his business is, and it's very, it's local. He's been working in the community for some time, works with, partners with Mystic Valley Elder Services, and function, and provides a very significant function to provide home service, to keep elders aging in place. So I'd ask Dan to come up if he would.
Dan Lewis, Seven Ashley Court, Linfield. Tom kind of stole all my thunder, but we're Guardian Angel Senior Services. We are a 21-year-old, family-run home care service, and we have served the Malden community for most of that time. We're a very strong partner of Mystic Valley Elder Services. I think, I think they sent in a communication about us moving into the area. It's very important for us. We're excited to have a physical location here in Malden, not just to better serve our clients and the community, but also from, from a recruiting standpoint, so that we can hire more Malden residents to take care of more seniors. And that's really helpful for us to be physically present. So we're excited about it. As Tom said, we think that the building, we think it's a gorgeous building, and we think it's running really well. So we're hopeful that the adding of general office use will allow us to continue to operate it kind of as is in the current state.
I've reviewed the staff, Michelle's recommendations, and I'd like to speak to several, which I think are rather important, if I may.
Well, before we get there, councillor, I have a few questions. I don't know if anyone else has some questions.
Sure.
Before we get to what you're looking to have changed in the recommendations. The questions I have involve around Guardian Services. If I understand it, and I'm familiar with part of the building, because my optometrist used to be in there.
Okay. That's the space we're going to be in.
Back when Dr. Price was, was there.
It's on the right side, as you're looking at the building from the street?
Well, it was sort of on the front and left from the street.
Okay, I thought on the plan it said, in old times I saw optical, yeah.
Regardless, it was, I've been inside and stuff like that, and I've, I've gone there. The questions I have, I read in Tony Callahan's letter that he submitted, that you were only going to have four staff onsite in that.
Three to five.
Three to five onsite? But there was going to be monthly trainings? How many people would be coming in, and is it after hours that those trainings would be occurring? And could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So we do provide a lot of training for our staff out in the field, so that, you know, we make sure they're taken the best care of our seniors. so that, you know, we make sure they're taking the best care of our seniors. That really depends on the turnout. I would say that it's probably going to be three to five people that come in for training, right? I don't think it would be much more than that.
Would be during the day or after hours, or?
In all honesty, it's when we can get them to agree to come. So we offer both, I guess.
Okay, so, training onsite, three to five attendees, various times of the day? Okay. I've gone by a couple times, and one time isn't really, isn't really representative, I think, of what happens there. It was after the snowstorm. And what is your plan for snow removal? Because when I went there, like a quarter of the parking spaces on the right side of the building couldn't be used because they were being used for snow storage.
Right on the right side?
Yes. Well, that's where most of the patients park.
Okay, they go up to Tufts.
It wasn't even until recently that I realized that those parking spaces were available for patients on the left side that go down to the YMCA.
Right.
So whenever I went there, I either parked in the small lot or on Main Street. So I'm just curious what your plans for snow removal are.
Yep, so from my understanding, the way that they've currently been doing it, it's been working fine, but we would be happy to remove the snow as needed from the property. But, and I don't know if it makes sense for them to speak to how they're currently doing it, but my opinion there hasn't been any.
It didn't seem to be working fine when you lost a quarter of the spaces for them piling snow up in it.
Right, right, but I guess my point is, is I don't think that they, that people weren't able to park, right? So there were still enough spaces for the people coming to the building, even when they lost a few of the spaces.
I saw people parking on Main Street.
You did, okay.
Yeah. When I was there, people were pulling up on Main Street and walking in.
Well, we would certainly.
From the two-hour parking, so.
Yeah, we would certainly remove the snow if it needed to be removed from that area, absolutely.
Okay, a couple other things I noticed is the dumpster seems to be blocking spaces. So you have the spaces, it's lined, which is great. That when I went there the first time, it was filled with snow, but you couldn't have gotten it in anyways because of the location of the dumpster and the fencing around the dumpster, you couldn't make the turn in.
That's a good point. I think we have to acknowledge that that forty-ninth space, if you will, is really inaccessible because of the swing. With the enclosure for the dumpster, you really can't access that last spot at the rear.
Right, right. Yeah, so that's one issue. When I went most recently, all the spots were taken except the three handicap spots in that, yes, on that left side, on the right side of my building, right, right. So I think what you need to, what you might want to consider is putting some sort of signage to let people know that there are a number of spaces open on the left, and that's not just reserved for tenants. It's available for patients also, and that type of thing.
The doorway, I think, is on that side, so they probably all go there first.
Exactly. Like I said, until this petition came up a couple, a month or so ago, I didn't even realize those were available for the, for the home, for this location, five seventy-eight Main.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we believe that the parking lot requires a bit more policing. I think without, without the owner being onsite, we believe some of the neighbors and/or other businesses are availing themselves of our parking. So just, just a note that I, we really want to keep an eye on the parking and be sure the parking is for our building, not for neighbors, not for adjoining nearby businesses.
Okay, thank you. The other, the other question I had, because the biggest issue I see here is the parking. The one other issue that I do see, when I was comparing the previous special permits that were granted, is regard to the basement. The, from the elevator forward to Main Street is always supposed to be accessory to those that already exist in there. And I think there's one unit, which fortunately is going to have their lease expire in a couple weeks. The people in B eighteen, I couldn't find them on your tenant log.
I asked that very same question. And I'm told by United Properties that Dean Dental Lab is associated with B two, which is American Dental Consultants. That's a subsidiary of American Dental Consultants, as I understand it. If you, if you see B two, that's American Dental Consultants, and that's their accessory space for their subsidiary. But it's called Dean Dental Lab.
Okay. No, no, that's good to hear, because it's just, and it's one thing, one space, and it seemed to be expiring at the end of this month. So I don't know if they could have been moved to like B ten or one of the others, but hearing that they are a related party to an existing tenant, then that satisfies the condition. So that's terrific. Do you plan on doing any type of construction to the space that you'll be occupying? So you're just going to move right into what's there?
Yeah, I mean, we might need to do some network cabling for, you know, for IT, for the computers, but.
Right, but no installation of new offices or reconfiguring of the offices that are there?
Nope.
Because it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big space, and it's set up as an optometrist's office, so it's.
It was, I think it was, yeah, it was Mass Ionier, right? Is that who was in there?
When I went before that, it was Dr. Price.
Okay.
And, you know, so we had the big reception area, the optometrist, the patient seating area. Then you went down a small corridor, and there were probably four eye rooms, where they would, had the machinery, and they would set things up. Yeah. No, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking him if he's going to have to change the configuration at all.
This is suite one oh one.
And he didn't seem to be familiar with the layout.
Is this suite one oh one on the plan?
I don't know what the numbers are on the plan.
Well, I have the plan. I guess what my question really is, is your administrative use for three to five people, can you make it work in what was used as the?
Yeah, so our plan is to take half of what I thought was Mass Ionier, so that if you're looking at the building, standing on the sidewalk, the right side, so if you walk in, there's the fireplace, if you were going the front door, take everything to the right, and then.
It's on the plan, I believe the space you're taking is here.
Right, and so it says optical shop.
Optical shop, optical shop, and waiting room on the left side on the first floor of the plan.
Isn't that the right?
I'm sorry.
That's the right side.
That's the, left, right, that's the right side.
Well, if that's the case, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
What's going to be done with the other side?
So the other side is vacant, and we would look to rent it.
So you'll split that.
Yeah.
Space that was, I think Mass Ionier went in there after.
Yeah.
Afterwards. But you're going to look to split that first floor and then rent out.
And I don't think that I would need to put a wall up. I think I would just use it the way that it is. We would take, because it's, that reception area is enough of a, I would just take the right side and let someone take the left if they wanted to take the whole thing.
Okay, no, that makes sense. I see what you're saying. I was under the impression after what I read and stuff, that you were taking the whole, the whole horseshoe.
Yeah, no.
Okay. No, that makes more sense. What's that, Michelle?
I'm sorry, you said three thousand square feet, right?
I didn't. I don't know what the square footage is.
Well, this is thirty-eight seventy-one, but in your presentation, I thought you said you were going to occupy three thousand.
Approximately three thousand.
So we'll take this room, all of this, and this room, and this will be common.
That'll be common. I'd have to do the calculations, but that's the way you would indicate about three thousand feet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the math on that, I'm sorry. So the, we'll take where it says clinic behind the stairs, we're taking that too? So I don't know if that counts, maybe the common area?
So you're taking four, four offices?
One, two, three, four, five.
Five.
Yeah, you know, I was just, if the first floor is fifty-seven sixty, and you're taking three thousand, you're taking more than half of the first floor. So I'm just trying to understand where.
So that may be inaccurate then, Michelle. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't.
Maybe closer to two thousand.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the square footage, it's not easy.
But it's the five offices to the right of the reception area, including the clinic, what's labeled clinic behind the stairs. So it's those five offices.
And do you don't have any prospective tenants yet?
No.
Okay. Ken Intouche.
I don't know if this would help. I'm just looking to clarify it. So you're talking about, you know, what the chair called the entire horseshoe, changing that whole first-floor area into, what, not medical use, general office? So you'd be looking to change that entire larger area into general office, and then you would just occupy half of it?
No, we're asking for general office for the whole building.
For the whole building?
For the whole building, so that if potential tenants come along, we don't have to come back each and every time.
An accountant wants to move in.
For general office for an accountant or an attorney or.
It was my understanding that was a positive use for the community.
So I'm just going to try to clarify it. I just, I'm just trying to have a little difficult time as well, if it's the whole building, and you have all these other medical uses still there.
And I still want to be able to have medical, so I'm hoping to have medical for general office.
But then this area here, you're only going to occupy half of this vacant area.
Like we're, we provide a medical service, but we're still considered office, right? So there could be other companies like us that are in that gray area that want to be in the medical building.
Right, okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Those were the ones that are raising those issues that I happened to see. And like I said, most of my stuff involves around parking. Well, I do have a question for Michelle. Michelle, back when we had heard this previously, there was four spaces required per thousand foot for medical. Do you happen to remember when that changed to five point five? Is that more recently?
I don't, I don't know if that was a recent change, or that was, at the time, medical and dental offices were a different use category. That's when this permit was first issued. So I do believe that had a different parking. I think the board allowed a lower parking. It allowed the four ratio. I don't, I don't think, I think it was five or five point five then, but I can look that up.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, it wasn't that the parking requirement changed. I think the board allowed it based on the fact that it was going to be medical offices.
Right, it was a while ago. I just don't recall, because I sat on those hearings, and I don't recall us reducing the parking requirements at the time. So I was presuming that it changed at some point since those initial permits were granted.
Mr. Chair, is it appropriate to approach and give you the updated parking survey?
If you'd like, you're welcome to. We have your other one. Okay, thank you. Thank you. What's that?
I don't know, I just took them in half. If you have extras.
And this parking study that you did, Counselor, that's with the current vacancy, right?
That, that's, right.
So it's twenty-seven percent of the floor space is vacant right now?
Right. I think the building has had a history of a certain amount of vacancy. That's been my experience with the building. And I just point out the Holiday, I did follow up on that, because I was a little bit puzzled by how, why twenty-two cars in a Holiday? The, yeah, the, Tufts, Tufts was open that day. Right, so that accounted for, that made me feel better. I thought it was all neighbors that were parking there.
Might have been more prompted, you asked that question about who's parking there.
Yeah. Is it appropriate to speak to the recommendations now, or?
Let me first see if anyone else has any questions for you, and if they don't, you can certainly present what it is you're looking to have changed. I don't see anyone weighing in with any other questions, so if you wanted to go through.
So I think number two just needs to be clarified, if we can. We're changing definitions, medical office.
I'm sorry, excuse me, what's that, Ken? Well, I'm not sure, no, why don't we, if he's got questions about it, he can mention it. I don't think we're going to debate it back and forth, but if you let us know which ones you have a concern with.
On the recommendations?
Yes, because we're not going to negotiate back and forth that it should change to this, from this to this. Just let us know which ones you have problems with.
Yes, so number two, again, I think just needs to be clarified, because we have this issue with the zoning, and I have, oh, probably six or eight old zonings in my office. So I did the research to look, and sometime around two thousand and ten, Michelle may know the exact year, we went from medical and dental office to medical center use. So there was a, there was a change in the zoning. And the medical office is what was granted in the ninety-three and ninety-six. And I am just concerned about the sentence that says, "Any other medical center use shall require an amendment of this special permit." Because if you look at the medical center use, many of those uses are what's in the building now and what I would think would fall under medical use, medical office use, the one we have from ninety-three and ninety-six. So I'm just trying to get some clarity there. We certainly don't want to come back every time we have a new tenant, and I'm sure you don't want us to come back every time we have a new tenant. But I don't know if I'm making myself clear with the, with the need for clarification between medical, medical office and dental use, which was the old definition versus the medical center use, which is the new definition, but has all those same uses, many of those same uses, under medical center use.
Okay, and then the next one you have issues with?
Number three, the dumpster. I understand that the recommendation is to comply fully with the zoning, which would. is to, to comply fully with the zoning, which would require a twenty-foot setback. But I think what's important to point out to the board is there was a ten-foot wall there, and then there's a seven-foot fence on top of the wall. So from my perspective, that seems like a seventeen-foot buffer from the neighbor, because, uh, as opposed to pushing it out, which then you lose parking if you push the dumpster out, of course. You probably lose, um, five or six spaces, I would imagine, anyway. Um, and, but with that wall and with that fence, I think the neighbors are buffered from the dumpster.
And, and how often is the dumpster, um, emptied?
Three times a week.
Okay. Because I, I mean, if there's some noxious odor, the seventeen feet isn't going to matter. It's...
Right.
It's going right up into someone's house, or...
But, but I also would point out, and I forwarded this to Michelle, uh, earlier, uh, the Google street, uh, view from two thousand seven shows the dumpster right there against the wall. And the G- city's GIS from two thousand ten shows the dumpster right against the wall. And I followed through for the various years going forward, and it's against the wall. So I'm just giving you a little history. It's been there, I think, for at least eighteen years.
So you've been out of compliance for eighteen years?
Apparently. Not my client.
No. Okay, and, and any others?
Uh, last but not least is the, number ten, the parking. Um, I, the way I calculated, the first floor, the second floor, and the unrestricted portion of the basement, that is, there's this restricted portion that's supposed to be for accessory use and storage, which I would, uh, suggest should not count for parking, but the, certainly the unrestricted portion of the basement should count. And that, as I calculated, that comes to thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen square feet, which would require fifty-five parking spaces. Uh, my client has committed to taking snow off-site, so the, and I, we did admit that that one, the forty-ninth space by the dumpster, you can't access. So we have forty-eight onsite, so if I do the math, I think we, uh, shouldn't be required to have more than seven off-site. And we have currently, uh, we're going to be assigned the parking agreement at, uh, twenty-five Florence for the off-site parking, which the current owner is utilizing
Okay, Michelle?
Yeah, I, well, I had a question, um, if I could. When, when you, um, when we read the condition that said, um, and this is the, one of the conditions of the last two special permits, that speaks about the, what you're calling the restricted basement use. And it, it reads, um, that section, you know, with the remainder, but are restricted to accessory, employee, and storage. How, how is that regulated? How do you know it's not another office down there? Or what, 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 why do you, what makes it accessory? If it's the same tenant, the same business name, how, how is that being regulated to not, you know, be part of the office? I'm not, I'm not clear. And I see there's a couple duplicate tenants, like, so for example, Solea Aesthetics has one of these accessory uses, and they also have a regular office. How do you know what's going on in each one? And how do you know it's accessory?
I, we can only speak going forward, but it sounds like you want to know how it's being handled presently?
Well, presently, and if you propose to keep, keep the same use, um, which goes to your question about the parking. I believe the whole basement is being used as part of these businesses, whether it's an office, a desk, a file cabinet. If the office were bigger on the first floor, that desk, office, cabinet, person would be there. So I'm saying I, I don't, I wasn't around when that was put in, but in my mind, accessory is like there aren't any people, there's no desk. Um, and I'm not sure how, that's how I, I think that number should be part of it, because I think they're being used as part of the offices. So that, that's my point to the parking piece for everybody. I did calculate that in there. Include that in the number.
Can I ask, what's the legal definition of accessory? Because you referenced employee and what was the other?
Well, the condition that the board put on it said accessory, employee, and storage. So...
So it sounds like people can be in there? Is that...
Yeah, I, I believe so. And when you look at the suites, and there are desks and sinks, and, I mean, when you look at the floor plans, it looks like...
I'm just trying to understand what accessory means. So if accessory is allowed, and it's...
Well, it was allowed under the special permit. I'm just curious as to what that may have morphed into, or what it, what it actually means. Like if it, if it didn't say storage, I would say accessory maybe means storage. But they put storage separate, so accessory isn't storage.
Well, the use of employee is also a bit puzzling.
Right. So it, it sounds like it's an extension of the office, um, in my reading, but I, like I said, I wasn't around. But I did use that to calculate expecting employees can be in all parts of these, the building. So, um, and then potentially customers or clients or work or whatever. So that's how I came up with the number. I did add, although I will know, Mr. Chair, if I could, the numbers on the plans don't match up. Right? So the, the numbers that are called USF, which I thought was usable floor, is different from RSF, which I think might be rental square footage. I think I Googled it. And then that's different from the number you gave us for the, the first floor. So, like, none of the, the numbers really add up. So I'm curious really what the square footage is we're talking about. Uh, but I based the parking on the, not the plan, on the numbers you gave. That's how I, I calculated the parking. I used sixteen fifty-five. And I also looked at fourteen three sixty-two. So I looked at two possible scenarios. Excluding the attic only, so including the entire basement, where it's, you know, set up usable offices, or excluding the attic and this so-called restricted part of the basement. That's in the parking calculation, how I, I came up with those numbers. And subtracted using the higher, because if, the whole thing could potentially be medical. That's where I came up with the forty-two.
But did you, did you apply five point five, Michelle?
I did. I applied five point five and four.
But I think we're grandfathered at four.
Uh, you have the condition that says you're four. But whereas we don't know if it's interchangeable office or medical, and you don't actually come back in, there'll be no way of knowing.
But o- office is four. We have the special, we have the rights to the special permit from ninety-three, ninety-six. At four, for medical, office is four. So to me, from my perspective, it was four was what was fair, because that's what we have a right to now. If we don't buy it, and we decide to go elsewhere, you're still going to have medical use at four per thousand.
Yeah, and that's the other question. The med- we did change the definition. We used to have medical and dental offices, and then you had hospital and clinic. It all got morphed into medical center, and hospital still stands alone. But when you look at the definition of medical center, it includes a whole variety. It's not just a dental office or a medical office, where, you know, there's a doctor, it can be procedures, blood testing, lab, it's a whole laundry list. So that's the other concern. Why that condition was written that way, because if medical center is allowed for the whole building, it can be medical, surgical, dental, physical rehabilitation, mental services, including testing, diagnosis, treatment, um, with or without a medical doctor, all outpatient, no overnight stays, but it could be blood draw, counseling, dental, dialysis, prenatal, postnatal, swab testing, laboratory, urinalis, vaccination. There's a lot, right? There's a lot, so...
That's what it is today, right?
But, but we're not asking for medical center. We're, we're just relying on the ninety-three and ninety-six decision that said medical office and dental.
Right, but the problem is, is you pointed out, some of your tenants are actually medical center. They're not just medical dental offices. And this is one of the reasons we changed it, because things were morphing into, a, a dental office was more, or a medical, a doctor's office, where there's just a doctor and, you know, your files, was morphing into, you know, an actual clinical use. So I think some of these on here, without even knowing, I don't even know what half of these are, but the ones that you can kind of tell what they are, they would, they would be medical center.
Well, I, I, Michelle, I, I spent some time trying to figure out what the uses were. And, um, I figured out most of them. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, is I calculated, um, some sort of mental health. Uh, one's a new age kind of healing, but, uh, the rest of them are mental health, uh, uses. There's a paternity, um, testing, there's, there is one primary care, there's a dietitian, uh, and it, so I don't...
Okay. Well, so maybe...
So let me, let me ask you a question, Michelle, because when you were going through your things, I was going to bring up what the counselor was suggesting that, can't, see, he- here, here's what I'm looking at. It, when, when I reviewed it, they want to retain what they got thirty years ago.
Right.
Right. If the definition has changed, what my question to you was going to be is, what issues do you see? Is it as simple as updating medical offices for whatever the current, whatever the current wording is? Is it as simple as doing that?
I don't think it is, because then I think it's open to all these other potential medical.
Okay. And what's the problem with opening up to all these other potential?
Well, because these aren't just a medical office or a dental office. These are potentially more customers, higher traffic, higher volumes, more services. Um, there's a lot of, you know, the, issues with medical waste, and, you know, all the issues that you typically look at when you're looking at a medic, some sort of medical center, as opposed to an office. So if it, if it, you could, if the, it can be narrowed down, which medical offices...
Right, but it doesn't sound like it can be. And some of them are all, are already bleeding into the new definition.
Right, right.
Right? And they don't have any idea yet. They, they don't even know the building yet on, on, they don't have any potential, they can't tell us whether it's going to be medical or general.
Right.
Um, I'm not sure, I'm fully appreciating the difference between, we, back then, thirty years ago, we called it medical offices.
Right.
We're now calling it medical centers. What's the difference?
It, it, a medical center now includes all these other clinic and di...
Right. And so what? I guess my question is, so what?
Well, for example, the best example I can give, like I said, is a medical office, where you go in and you sit with your doctor and you review your file. He's not doing procedures. It's not a dialysis clinic, where there's people coming and going, and, and service providers. So it, it's put, a, a medical office is more akin to a general office. It's a professional office, dental office. That wasn't...
But they open up an urgent care in here?
Under this medical center, yes, yes. Medical center, yes, urgent care is a good example. Um, I thought, I was trying to give other examples.
Okay. I, I was thinking that we could just change the wording. I don't think they're going to open up an urgent care, but...
No, but I, I mean, I, Hallmark Health is upstairs, Tufts, right? And, and they service the community. I mean, that's, kind of sounds like what you're talking about. So I, I guess I don't understand the concern around that, but, you know, I don't want to have a tenant that's been in that space, serving the community thirty years, all of a sudden not allowed to be there, or decide to move. Or if there's, Mass Pioneer was in there, right? Like, it's a medical building.
Right.
We just want to be able to also have general office, so that, I, I, I guess I, is if there's a particular thing that you're concerned about going, we can certainly talk about that.
Right.
Right? But I don't want to limit it, if we can help.
Right, right, right. Well, that's a good example. A medical office building is different from a clinic or an urgent care. I, I don't know. I, is Tufts performing procedures in the building?
So I can't speak to that, but when I went in there, you know...
I think it's an office, right?
They see patients.
They see patients.
Right.
And they do have a medical wa- waste, uh, uh, trash unit.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, maybe you just want to, you know, say what you, you wouldn't not be comfortable having in there. By right, with just, they come in and apply for the occupancy permit, and it's in. So I would maybe try to think of anything, um...
Yeah, okay.
That you might want to exclude.
I mean, I listed, you listed fifteen things there. I mean, I don't know if that's going to be an easy...
Well, are you, I mean, are you okay with that? I mean, um, I, I don't know. Again, I think some of these have other issues or, or impacts that you might want to address.
So it's, it's allowed today, though, right? So if we don't buy it, because this doesn't work out, then somebody could buy it and just keep it medical. They could put an urgent care in there without having to come before you, right?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
That's, that's actually not correct.
Right. Okay, well, what would ha- have to happen? One, someone would have to know it, that something's coming in that doesn't fall in the old category. How would we, how would we manage that?
Well, let's suppose an urgent care wanted to come in. So they're going to apply for a building permit to put in urgent care. And they're going to say, "That's not medical, that's not a medical office. This is a special permit. It limits it to this." They'll look at that. You know, they're going to have to retrofit the whole building if it's an urgent care, right? Where does the ambulance pull up, all the different stations? I mean, I, I, you, you've reviewed urgent care facilities before, so...
But isn't, isn't that subject to...
Yeah, there's no ambulance in urgent care.
Or, but, you know, uh, pickup, drop-off, or whatever it is. So I, I mean...
I think Tufts is a primary care. It's like the same as an urgent care, right? You go in, you're, you're sick, you go in. That's, but my doctor, I, it's my urgent care. It's the same thing.
I'm going to try to...
I'm not familiar with what their services are providing.
Yeah. So I mean, when I tour, they're, they're seeing patients. I mean, that's...
It seems to me that the building commissioner, as zoning administrator, would be the interpreter of medical office versus a, a use that exceeded what he considered medical office. And then would have to appeal it.
And that, and that might be true, Counselor, but I guess what I'm, what I'm struggling with is, medical office doesn't exist anymore.
That's right.
Right? So what's he going to compare it to? Something that doesn't exist. He's going to go to the current definition. And I, I'm not sure. I mean, maybe we have to go through that list, Michelle, and, and tick off what we like and what we don't like, because I was hoping that it would be as simple as changing the, what we called it then and what we call it now, and then move on. Well...
Could we just leave it the way it is and add general office? And then nothing has to change?
Michelle?
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm reading this right now. Um... So right now, you can use it for medical offices?
Right.
Okay. And, and, and an optical shop, which...
So would Nelson go back to the old definition of medical office and use that in his determination? Or is he immediately going to say, "Medical office doesn't exist. We now have this new thing, so anything under that list, they can put in it?"
I don't know.
Okay.
I can try to reach out, if anybody's watching it.
Well, no, give, give it one second. Let's try to hit, Tom had two other ones. Let's see, those might be simpler. Um, number three, relocate dumpster. So it meets the, um, ordinance?
Right. Right. That's what's, that's what's recommended. The, I, the board previously had that in as a condition. That's an identical condition. Dumpster shall be relocated, this is in ninety-six, ninety-three.
Right, and they've never complied with it.
Shall be relocated, so as not to impede with the required parking and comply fully with section five hundred point three point eight, which is the new section that says it can't be within the property line.
Can they do that? I've walked around that lot a few times. I don't know where they would put it. It doesn't take out parking.
Maybe near the building. I don't know if it could be near their building, as opposed to the property line. I, I don't know. I'm not sure.
I thought there was parking on both sides, so we'd be losing parking if we had the movement, if we complied with twelve, twenty, thirty.
Yeah, it's up, it's up to the board. I'm, I'm repeating what, what you previously thought was a concern. I still think it is a concern to have it abutting a property line, a resident... I'm, I'm repeating what, what you previously thought was a concern, I still think it is a concern to have it abutting a property line, a residential property. Maybe it can be a different property line? I, I don't know, if, I, they'd have to modify their own plan, I don't have any ideas, I would recommend you comply.
Okay, well, you're trying to get a hold of Nelson, Stephanie Stone.
So the, in the proposed amendment, it says twelve hundred, twelve thousand square feet, um, if, if that succeeded, then you would have to get offsite parking. So right now, what is the amount of leased space that's being used for the medical use?
The entire building's medical use right now, so we're, we're asking for the exception for general office so that we can move in, and then potentially rent to other general office people, whoever comes as a tenant, right, so.
Well, well, it says if the occupancy of leased space exceeds twelve thousand, so meaning there's some parts that are vacant that are not up to?
I believe if I could, if I could step in and maybe counsel, the counselor can speak to it, that's what Counsel Callahan proposed. I don't believe that's Michelle's recommendation. The twelve thousand square feet, that if it exceeds twelve thousand square feet, then they have to go get a, uh, offsite parking. That wasn't yours, as I recall reading the, the stuff Tom submitted, that he was proposing that wording.
If I could say too, every time I've been to the building, there's been ample parking, and I've witnessed people walking from other business and other homes into the lot. They use, well, that's a resource, I think, to the community currently, and they're using.
Right, I'm, I'm saying if the, if the concern is parking, so if you end up leasing all the space for medical center use, and there's a lot more parking needs versus general office generally has a lower parking threshold, would you be able to limit the medical center use to only a certain amount of leased space and the rest can be office? And that's okay, because this is in a residential district, so you don't even have to give medical center use?
Well.
It has medical.
It has medical center now, it's, it's, except for what they list on their tenant log.
Right, and there's like plenty of vacant.
Pretty well full.
Right.
I don't know that we could go in and, and start carving up and say, okay, you get forty percent general and sixty percent medical.
So medical, if I, I'll clarify, so medical, medical office is a type of medical center, okay? Medical centers are various types of healthcare facilities, including but not limited to the office of an individual practitioner, clinics and group practices. So it's not that medical office and medical center are the same thing. Medical office got folded into medical center, but medical center includes a lot of other things as well.
So we want to retain medical office here?
You want to retain medical office.
It's not that medical office got replaced with medical center, it got moved under medical.
That's right, that's why the recommendation was that it be allowed use for medical offices. It said optical shop, but if that's not there and they're going in there, I would recommend you take that out, that was a special exception you made. Which must be accessory, well, take that whole thing out. Any medic, any other medical center use, so if it's not a medical office, now, if that's too broad, I hear what they're saying, then I think you need to list what would be acceptable, and if they have to come back because they have a tenant that's, fits into this category, then I, I would recommend that, otherwise, I, I believe, um.
Keep talking, I'll listen.
No, I'm done, there's nothing else.
Okay, if we could park that, Michelle, for a moment, we're going to take something out of order. If you guys don't mind, Counsel O'Malley has a, an appointment he has to get to, um, and he would like to offer his, his testimony in favor, I imagine, or?
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind opening up, I just wanted to be able to, so you can deliberate based on the, the hearing from, from the public.
Right, and you don't have time to submit a letter right now.
Well, I, I did, I could, but I mean, I think it would be better if.
Okay, but this moment we'll take, we'll open up briefly those that might, that would like to speak in favor, Counsel, is it speak in favor?
Hi, everyone. I'm, I'm hoping that maybe my, my testimony can help provide some clarity in terms of what the neighborhood, uh, what I believe would be in the best interest of the neighborhood based on my conversations with, with neighbors. Um, I'm just bringing up what I've prepared. So five seventy-eight Main Street, this building is a historic structure, it was donated by the Converse family. It was originally the home for aged persons, um, it was a, you know, private, um, public, um, nursing home for our community. Um, the petitioner is a home health aid service which provides, provides in-home, um, health services to elderly residents in Malden and our surrounding communities. I think it would be great to bring back this type of, um, elderly-based service to our community, um, I think it's a great return for this building. As the petitioner explained, um, because it's a home health aid company, uh, they're primarily just going to be having general offices. So this is not going to be seeing patients on site, uh, y'all talked about how that's going to have a, a less in, uh, in, intense use when it comes to parking, um, and I'm viewing this as more of like a back office for the employees, they explained, doing some training. So, and as we know, it's currently a medical office building, uh, and I'm hoping that the planning board, uh, wouldn't add any conditions which would limit the existing medical use. Um, I think it's a point of pride that we once had Mass Eye and Ear on Main Street in Malden, we no longer have that. I think it would be great to get another optical shop for the neighborhoods to be able to walk to and get their eyes checked. Not having that type of service in our community is a detriment, having it in our community is a benefit. Having any real medical use in this building, I think, would be a benefit to our neighborhood, uh, rather than having to commute outside of Malden or go to Boston to get these services done. So I think that encouraging medical use in any of its forms, whether, whether it's a medical office or a medical center, to me, it sounds like the exact same thing. I think we should be encouraging that, um, it would be good for the neighborhood, the, the community at large, but also for our tax base. So one of the things that's also going on is we're, we're, commercial buildings are not doing well right now, uh, bankruptcies are up, uh, people, we have a lot of vacant storefronts. So when you have commercial properties that are looking to actually create jobs in Malden and add to that commercial tax base, it helps keep our community financially healthy, um, as businesses go out, as more commercial property is converted to residential, it's shifting that tax burden to the residential side. Commercial properties pay more tax. When it comes to, uh, yeah, so that would be condition two, um, I don't think that we should be limiting, uh, the, any other medical center use shall require an amendment to the special permit, I think that that, that sentence should be struck. I also, also like to add that when it comes to this dumpster, um, it looks like it's a pre-existing non-conforming dumpster, like the chair pointed out, likely in violation, but as, as Ward Counselor, um, I've experienced this a lot. We have a lot of properties that, that our health department requires a dumpster, but their properties are not large enough to have a dumpster. There are certain fire codes that don't allow you to put it next to the building, um, because dumpsters catch on fire occasionally. And, uh, when it comes to where it's currently located, it's been there, uh, probably twenty years or more. It is next to a retaining wall, um, I've gotten no complaints about, um, the dumpster. So I don't think that, um, number three, condition number three, uh, would be solving a problem that exists, but I do think relocating it would exacerbate the loss of parking. I appreciate you letting me speak, I do have to go, um, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel. So at this point, we will temporarily, um, pause those who would, would like to speak in favor, um, and get back to, um, Michelle. Any comments you have on this whole medical, medical offices, it sounds like medical offices is a subset of medical centers?
Yes.
And you believe that we should keep it as medical offices, does that clarify you, Counsel, you said you needed clarity and definition? Does that help you? Can you speak in the microphone, please?
All right, just as long as, again, I'm looking at the sentence, any other medical center use, I'm not sure what other medical center use means, shall require an amendment of this special permit. Many of the uses in medical center right now are uses that are in the building and, we believe, fall under the umbrella of medical office.
So is your contention that they don't fall under medical office, but under medical center and they currently exist?
I, I'd say if, I, I'd be comfortable in recommending that if the building commissioner determines that the proposed use does not fall under medical office use, but rather under medical center use, then we have to come back for a special permit.
Okay, Michelle, did you get any feedback from the building inspector? Okay.
I, I just have faith in the building inspector as zoning administrator to make common sense decisions, and I think that's what we're talking about, is common sense. We're not asking for substance abuse treatment office, we're, we're just asking for medical offices, you know, in, in predominantly site, uh.
Right, but you can't tell us how many of your existing tenant roster might fall into one of these other categories, isn't that correct?
I don't think we understand the definition well enough to answer that, at least I don't.
Okay, no, no, and that, and that may be fair, because this is the first I'm hearing about this whole disconnect.
Like, would the dental office that's in there be medical office or medical center?
Michelle?
And would the mental health be medical office or medical center?
Well, as you said, you leave it up to the building commissioner to determine that.
Well, that, that's why.
I think a medical office is pretty self-explanatory, it's an office, it's not a dialysis facility, it's not an urgent care facility. Substance abuse treatment center is explicitly excluded from medical center, so you don't have to worry about that. But I, I'm, if this is the first you're hearing, I mean, you, we've done this before when you've permitted different things under medical center, you've limited it to exactly what they're asking for, what type of medical center they're looking for. That's all we're trying to do here.
And I understand that, but.
But I understand the confusion if they don't know.
But this one tonight, if they don't know what they have, because we certainly don't want to push you into non-compliance.
Right.
That if we put some wording down,
Yeah.
and we don't know what it is, all of a sudden, a month from now, you find out, oh my.
I just like to keep discussing conditions, right, so why, it's not broke, right, like, I, I just leave it the way it is.
Right, so. So, okay.
Well, the way it is is medical offices, that's what you got the special permit for.
Right.
So there should be no issue if we call it medical offices, it's not medical center.
We take no issue with that, but the way that sentence is written, Michelle, I think it just begs the question without some further clarity, with all due respect.
I mean, medical center is not medical office, so.
But, but many of the medical center uses under, many of the medical office uses we have in there now are under the medical center definition.
Like which one?
Did the definition change, like you had asked earlier, right?
Mental health, mental health, dietitian, um, uh, primary care, uh,
Okay.
medical aesthetics.
Okay, so you, you, you know what they are?
Yeah.
Okay, so then why are we saying, why, why are we saying we don't know what they are then? I, I'm not understanding that.
Because Tom said that medical offices was not clear, and he was not, he needed more clarity to understand what was under that.
Okay, he just gave a laundry list of what's in there. I would recommend, if you can be as specific as you can, I don't think this is medical center. That building is not being used, I, I would say is medical center, it's used for some of this that's defined. It's not being used for some of these other things. And if you're okay with that, I mean, I just don't, you know, I, I don't, I think that there, there's a reason that you typically specify what type of medical center use. You have, since this has been on the books. So I, I, that's why I, I would recommend that you do that, so that you understand.
We got a couple of people want to weigh in, and then we'll move on. Ken Antinucci.
You know, we keep going back and forth on a lot of this, it sounds like medical offices falls under the umbrella of medical center. Medical offices are already allowed by the previous special permits, with a reduced parking allotment of four per thousand square feet. The only change they're looking to do is to also allow some portion as general office space to the old special permit, which also is four thousand, four park, four spots per thousand square feet. So can't we just add general office, like this, this question, leave number two as is? If you need to clarify what medical offices are, whether that is per its original definition, it seems like Nelson would, the, the building commissioner would look at it as medical office, which is specifically different than medical center. So can't we just add the ability to put a general office use within the existing special permits, which are based on medical offices? And just get rid of the last portion of that second condition, the special permit supersedes previous special permits? So you maintain the existing special permits, but also just modify them to add general office? Does that make sense?
Uh, you could, except that, that, one of the previous special permits also allows a clinic. Clinic is different, I would say, from medical offices, so I, I definitely know from, from my own experience that when a business comes in, if it's, if it's a building specific to, for example, medical, and there's a couple in the city, there's one on the corner of Highland Ave, it's medical offices only. A business comes in and he reads the definition of medical center and sees whether it's in there, okay?
But would be medical center or be medical office?
He's determining that, right, but for example, the special permit says medical offices, that's as you said, or Chuck said a subset or subcategory, that's one type of medical center.
Right, and that's all.
So when, when a dialysis clinic goes to move in to where the special permit says medical office, he says no.
Right.
Right.
But that's okay, because that's how we all understand it.
Because it's medical, it's not a medical office.
Right, so that would fall under the, any other medical center use shall require an amendment to the special permit. So at that point, if a dialysis center wanted to move into that building, they would come in, look for permit from the building commissioner to go in, and he'd say, no, you're not allowed, okay, it's not allowed.
I agree, that's why I wrote the condition, right, right.
So we don't. So I guess, I mean, Counselor, I mean, the.
Well, but define any other medical center use for me, please.
Well, I guess it would be any other medical, any medical center use that doesn't fall under the definition of medical offices.
Right, so then Tufts can't be there, the dental practice can't be there, so, so, that, that's.
Do they not qualify?
Mass Eye and Ear couldn't move back in, right?
Do they not qualify as medical offices?
No, on the new, as I understand it, the new definition, so they're there now, I just. So if we leave it the way it is and just add general office, the building commissioner can make his decision, I'm totally fine with that.
That's what I'm.
Okay, that's what you're advocating?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ronnie, uh, um, Ronnie Verma.
I was just going to say the same exact thing that you just said, Ken, um, just to add just general office, maybe even zero down to that specific area if it makes it easier for now, but basically what Ken just said in terms of just adding general office to the existing building, and, uh, not dive too deep into the medical office, medical center, because that's not what we're really looking at, we're just looking at general office.
Okay, thank you, Ronnie, uh, Risa Gray.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair, I was just wondering if we, if we know if there's any tenant on this list that was originally, that originally fell under medical office, but now would be considered medical center, so that we understand if there's something on, that.
That's what I asked the council board, he said he couldn't do it.
But can we understand from Michelle's, um, information there, if there's something on the list that would fall under medical center?
I think several would, I just don't think we know.
Do we know that?
All of them, right, but.
Can you do that? Can you do that, counselor? Can you go through the tenant register and say which one is beyond medical office? I didn't think you could. I thought you said you couldn't do that.
I think they all fall, it's my interpretation, medical office. Many of them have received certificate of occupancy, so I believe the building department passed on these. But again, they're predominantly mental health. There's a paternity, there's a new age healing, there's a primary care doctor, there's a dietitian, and there's a medical aesthetics.
I would think tufts would probably be a clinic, right? I mean, they're seeing patients, so I don't know what the definition of a clinic is, if that's not that. When you brought up clinic, I just want to, I don't...
I don't know, hold on, Ken. Okay, so you can't do that, Tom.
Not with a hundred percent clarity, no.
Okay, thank you. Risa, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't.
Ken Antinucci.
Say these, you know, the petitioner didn't come in and isn't looking to add general offices, and this special permit exists, and they bought the building, and all the tenants presumably have certificates of occupancy for their businesses that have been granted under medical offices.
Okay, so what are you suggesting, Ken?
I'm suggesting we just add general office to the...
Medical office and add general office?
Add general office, because right now, whoever is there is there, and under the definition of general, of medical office.
Okay.
So why are we thinking they're gonna be kicked out all of a sudden?
I don't know, Consular, Calhoun?
Yeah, I mean, I understand your concern, because words matter.
Well, because many of those medical offices are currently under medical center definition, and there's a stipulation in the recommendation that says we gotta get a special permit if there's a medical center use.
Okay, thank you. Ken, you all set? Stephanie Stone.
Just to go back to the question about parking, because it seems like that's, to me, that's primarily the concern. It's being used as medical center, fine, but if it fills up, the vacancies fill up, it seems like there may be a parking issue, and there's some sort of potential agreement for use of off-site parking for forty-two vehicles. And the stipulation here is to provide the agreement, so is that happening? Is the agreement in place?
It's not, I think the current agreement is, what are they, there's seven?
I think eight, eight or ten off-site currently are available, but not forty-two.
And never used. There's just not, even when Mass In-Ear was there, my understanding is the parking has never been an issue in this building.
Did that answer your question?
So, so the off-site, if you were to lease the off-site space, it would only be ten spaces and not forty-two?
I think we've asked for seven.
We've suggested seven or eight. I think there's some debate back and forth whether the restricted area of the basement should be counted or not counted.
Okay. Are you all set, Stephanie? Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So, for number three, what I heard was we keep medical office and/or general offices in condition number two. Number three, relocate dumpster so as not to impede any parking. I fully understand that it currently violates Board of Health codes right now. But I would suggest that it's been there for thirty-plus years. Councilor O'Malley hasn't had any issues, and there were no problems with that, and a butt's retaining wall. I suggest that we remove condition number three. Or change condition number three so that it needs to be relocated to allow use of space forty-nine.
I don't think there's a spot, honestly, to go with it. To be honest, I don't think there's a location for it to move to.
Okay.
Then you'd block access over to all the condensers and everything on the side, and it would be too close to the building.
So now we're talking forty-eight spaces.
Forty-eight spaces.
Okay, well, whoever ends up making the motion, I would consider either eliminating condition three or changing condition three to read, make, make it, make every effort to move the dumpster without losing more parking spaces, we're already losing one. That, that's what I would suggest, either eliminate it altogether or have them make a good faith effort to see if it can be pushed down a little bit or, or something without losing any more spaces.
What if that forty-nine space was like for the bikes, bike parking, would that help?
I don't know, isn't bike parking usually up front? Michelle?
There's access from the back of the building so people could put their bikes back and walk out.
That might be a...
Oh, I'm just...
Yeah, an elegant solution to adding the bikes and not having to move the dumpster.
And then hopefully having less cars, because we've got bikes, parking bikes next to us.
That, that, that might be a great solution. And then the last one is provide a copy of the agreement of onsite. There seems to be a dispute on, is forty-two too high? I don't think it's seven, but I, I don't know if forty-two is too high, because what we really can't say is, no one can tell us who the occupants are. So even at four per space, right, we're still short, if I understand it correctly.
So, and that just may not matter, if you're bored of forty-two spaces, I can't buy the building? It just doesn't make sense, and some, it'll just stay the way it is. We heard from the ward counselor, parking's not an issue. I mean, it's, it's just not, the community's using the parking lot.
Then that needs to stop.
I mean, it's a benefit to them. I don't care if it stops unless it hinders people using the building, but it doesn't today, from what we've seen and from the parking survey.
Okay, well, let's, that's understood, so that condition ten, whoever's making the motion needs to consider that, the number they want to see in that, given what the petitioner has mentioned, and what they've presented, and what Councilor O'Malley has mentioned. But at this point, let's make a deal is over, and we're going to continue with the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, no one had any other questions, they've finished, so at this point, we'll reopen those that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Yeah, I mean, she has a copy? Okay. No one else would like to speak in favor?
Yes, Diane has a lot of...
No one else present in the hall would like to speak in favor? Seeing, Diane, do you have anything to read in favor?
I do.
Oh, thank you, would you please read it?
I have an email dated Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty-five. Dear Ms. Romero, I serve as the Chief Executive Officer, the CEO of Mystic Valley Elder Services, MVES, a nonprofit organization headquartered in Malden. MVES serves as the state-designated aging service access point to the ASAP and area agency on aging, AAA, for the following eleven cities and towns. Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Medford, Melrose, North Reading, Reading, Revere, Stoneham, Wakefield, and Winthrop, working in close collaboration with the Executive Office of Aging and Independence, the AGE. Our mission is to support the right of individuals to live independently with dignity in a setting of their own choice by providing information, advice, and access to quality services and resources. We act as the entry point for older adults, people with disabilities, caregivers, and healthcare professionals to access a wide variety of home and community-based programs, services, information, and care coordination. We understand the principles of Guardian Angels Senior Services have applied for a special permit from the planning board to allow for their purchase of five seventy-eight Main Street for Guardian's administrative offices. MVES and Guardian have partnered for years in a collaboration allowing older adults in Malden and the immediate area to age in their own homes. The direct care services provided by Guardian are essential to the well-being of many of the consumers and families we serve. If we're, if it were not for Guardian's crucial and caring assistance, these individuals may have been forced to consider institutional residency either in Malden or, or more likely outside of Malden. MVES offers its support to Guardian as an important partner with MVES. It is a special permit, and it's a efforts to purchase a property to establish offices in our city. If you have any questions regarding email, please do not hesitate to contact me via email or by telephone. Thank you for consideration and your outstanding service here to our community. Sincerely, Lisa Gravone, MS Chief Executive Officer, Mystic Valley Elder Services, three hundred Commercial Street, Suite Nineteen, Malden, Mass. zero two one four eight.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anything else to read in favor?
I do not.
Okay, no one else to speak in favor, CNN hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone in opposition? Diane, do you have anything to read in opposition?
I do not.
CNN hearing, no one would like to speak or read in opposition, we'll declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report and recommendation, please?
So this is the planning report and recommendation dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I will not read it verbatim into the record, it is incorporated herein by reference into the record. Looking at the description of the subject property, this, as I mentioned earlier, these numbers for square footage were based on information provided by the petitioner, not necessarily what's shown on the plans. So as I mentioned, if you add up the numbers on the plans, they don't necessarily come up to these numbers. So I can't state, you know, which is more accurate, the plan, and again, there are two sets of numbers on the plans, too, for the square footage. However, these are the numbers I use for the parking calculation. So, as you heard, the petition is to amend conditions of the special permits. I think you, the petitioner did speak about amending condition three. So, condition three of case ninety-three eighteen, which you have a copy of, would be replaced with this, which talks about a square footage, so requiring off-site parking if occupancy exceeds twelve thousand square feet. I'll get to a couple of questions, concerns with that, when we get to that point. But that essentially would really not be enforceable, the city wouldn't be able to enforce that written that way. In terms of the zoning, the property is located in the Residence B zoning district, medical center use is prohibited in this zoning district. Current medical office use, which is now classified under medical center use, was allowed by special permit under then-existing regulations. So those then-existing regulations said you could petition to change any pre-existing non-conforming property to any other use. So they had picked medical offices for that. Prior use of the property, we heard about restrictions on use of the basement. So there are two different special permits here, and they both contain a condition that's similarly written regarding the basement. Specifically restricting use of the basement for medical offices. So it's twenty-eight hundred forty-two square feet per the petitioner's number provided. So you could see, one describes it as a section of the basement from the elevator toward Main Street, and one describes it as the remainder of the basement restricted. Both cases, they use the words accessory, employee, and storage uses, including general restroom facilities only. There's also a condition in one of the permits that says the attic shall be used only for storage. And then there are conditions in the original special permit, the second special permit said shall remain in full force and effect. Again, I've given you the copies, you can look at those. Proposed general office is prohibited in this district, it may be allowed as a change of use of pre-existing property in a residential zoning district. The direct butter to the west is the YMCA, to the north and west are three family dwellings, to the south are three family dwellings, to the east, on the other side of Main Street, a religious facility, medical offices and four family dwellings, to the north, on the other side, a home court, a mixed-use building with medical offices and two dwelling units. A two-family dwelling and a three-family dwelling, to the southwest, on the other side of Ramsdale Road, general offices and surrounding land uses a residential and business. Dimensional controls, the building appears to comply with all dimensional controls. The yards at Brooks weren't provided, so we couldn't confirm those. General office use has the same dimensional controls as medical center, and the proposal creates no nonconformities or violations. Terms of parking, in terms of number of spaces, parking required to occupy portions of the building under two possible scenarios, either sixteen fifty, five thousand, five fifty-five, which excludes the attic, or fourteen thousand, three sixty-two, which excludes the attic, and twenty-nine ninety-three square feet of the basement for the proposed uses. Given you the breakdown, the parking requirements, there are forty-nine parking spaces numbered on site. Depending on the building's square footage is occupied, for medical, there's an existing deficiency of thirty to forty-two spaces. For the proposed general office use, a deficiency of eight to seventeen spaces. There are several other parking requirements per the special permit conditions of those two special permits. The one we've talked about already is the dumpster, shall be relocated so as not to impede required parking, comply fully with the ordinance. The second has to do with medical offices and optical shop, medical offices allowed on the second floor and basement, providing that off-site, off-street parking be leased at a ratio of four spaces for every thousand square feet of medical offices. Then there's a similar condition in the next special permit that says off-street parking shall be leased for the clinic use, because they came back in for the clinic use. They needed a special permit for that. And ratio of four per thousand square feet floor space. Then, again, conditions that remain in full force and effect. Snow storage is required, it's not provided on site, parking for bicycles is required. Dumpsters are not permitted in front yards or within twenty feet of property line, shall be visually screened. Outstanding parking issues, property doesn't comply with the required parking for current medical office or previous clinic use. Regarding the required leased off-site parking, petitioner reported a parking agreement with twenty-five Florence Street for eight spaces that may be assigned to the new owner. Second issue is that the actual parking layout is not as shown on the plan. So there's a, look like there's a shift instead of, this is west of the main entrance and ramp, so the plan that was presented and approved is not how it's actually laid out. Three, several parking spaces are currently unusable, this is last month when I observed them. There were spaces being used for snow storage and the space we've heard about being blocked by the dumpster. There's no storage, snow storage depicted on the plan, no bicycle parking. In terms of special permit conditions regarding landscaping, a fence and planting screen was to be installed along the southern property line, subject to approval of the planning director, does not appear to be there. Also landscaping was supposed to be provided in accordance with the survey plan, which is the plan that you have, they use the same site plan. And again, that landscaping is in a different location. And then, conditions that remain in full force and effect. Current location of the dumpster, we heard about, about fourteen home court residence. And then, this was the comment I was talking about previously, regarding petitioner's proposed condition, that off-site parking only be required once they pass a certain occupancy number, square footage. It's not feasible for the city to monitor occupancy and leasing of offices in the building. So there'll be no way of knowing if a new petitioner enters or changes, if there's already a petition, an occupant there, there wouldn't be, and if the special permit allows either or, there won't be any way of determining that. So that was from the building commissioner, he said that we do not, that's not possible for us to do. Meaning, you know, we, we don't monitor when the lease expires or when a lease terminates. So if it's going to be based on occupancy of leased spaces, there's no way for us to know that. That one lease has ended, or a lease has been extended, or it's been terminated, or it's changed. So that's, that's the issue. Not that we don't know when the building's being occupied, but tying it to when space is being leased, there's no way for us to monitor that. The historical significance is noted here, I'm not going to get into that. They're not making any exterior changes that would trigger review under the demolition, alteration, delay ordinance. The finding you need to make to grant a special permit would be that the proposal's not modestimental to the neighborhood. modestimental to the neighborhood. So this recommendation is made prior to the public hearing, provided the board makes the required findings, that the special permits granted in cases 93 and 18, 9318 and 9643 be amended to allow general office use, and a new special permit be granted, subject to the following conditions. One, use of the property shall be as per plans unless and except is modified by these conditions. I will, right at this point, just stop briefly, you're going to need to figure that out before you vote on that, because if the plans aren't actually matching up with the numbers, you know, we're going to rely on the plans, if this is the condition, use of the property. So that's what the layout will be, those are the square footages, et cetera. So I'm not sure what the discrepancy is, or why, but, you know, mentioning that. Two, this special permit allows use of the property for medical offices and/or general offices. I had previously recommended, and an optical shop, which must be accessory to an onsite medical office, and shall be limited to 675 square feet. When I heard petitioner was taking over that area, I suggested it be deleted. The optical shop was something they needed to come in for, it was accessory to an eye doctor, so I thought, again, this is a residential district, and try to, you know, streamline this as much as possible. If I heard the council say he'd like it to be left in, I'm not sure, you know, about that. I don't, I would, I would recommend that you take it out at this point, if it's not proposed, and it's not there, and they're going to actually be using that space. Any other medical center use shall require an amendment to the special permit, and this special permit supersedes previous special permits. I mean, I stand by the recommendation that all of that be included. Three, relocate, except the optical part. Three, relocate dumpsters so as not to impede any parking space, comply fully with Section 12.20.030H. Four, the basement area east of the main entrance ramp, approximately 2,842, may be used for medical offices and/or general offices. And the remainder of the basement, approximately 2,193, shall be restricted to storage and utilities. That is different from what was previously allowed. Employee, it wouldn't be used for employees, it wouldn't be, quote, accessory to other offices, it's storage and utilities. The attic may be used only for storage. Six, that's number five. Six, there should be no vehicular access equals to the property via Home Court. Seven, provide copy of contract for snow removal. Eight, install and maintain landscaping per plan prepared, subject to reasonable approval of Ward City Councilor. The current landscaping shown on the plan they submitted is not what's there, and they haven't submitted a new landscaping plan, so I'm recommending that, so that a new plan be prepared and presented to the Ward Councilor, subject to reasonable approval. Nine, provide parking for four bicycles. Ten, provide copy of agreement for use of off-site parking for 42 vehicles. I think that was... everything. I don't think I had any, anything else.
Any others?
I don't think so, no.
Thank you, Michelle. If people have questions for Michelle, I just want to run through quick and just give my opinion, I can't make the motion, but my opinion as we go through the 10 conditions, I'll leave the one as it is. Number two, remove an optical shop, which must be accessory, but leave in medical office and general office, and just leave it at that, and leave it to the discretion of the building commissioner to decide what's medical office and, and the other piece of it. The intention is certainly not to have them have to go in and start evicting people because of that, but this one may come back and bite us, but that's my recommendation for that. I recommend we delete number three, it's been there over 30 years, the councilor has testified that he doesn't have any concerns or issues with it. I think an elegant solution is adding the spot that it's blocking, put the bike, the four, required four bicycle rack in that spot, so that people can park their bicycles and utilize that as much as possible. Basement area, I think we should add back in that its accessory, accessory uses is allowed, not limit the front half of the basement to just storage and utilities. Attic only storage, no vehicular access, fine, provide a copy of snow contract removable, because I believe that was a problem, they were using spaces for that. Number eight, fine about landscaping and having the council, Ward Councilor approve it. Nine, provide four bicycle spots, I don't know if we want to add in, in space for currently labeled 49. And for providing a copy of the agreement, I get that they're significantly short on what their parking requirements are. There's some dispute on what's correct, square footage it should be, that should be used, and which piece. I don't know that it's reasonable to ask for 42, but I think eight's too small also. I was thinking more in line of maybe 12 to 15, depending on who's making the motion, that instead of eight, make it 12 to 15 spaces. And bottom line, as I see it, is if they start filling up, people are going to notice, and the Ward Councilor is going to get involved, and maybe we can call them at that point. I agree with the building commissioner and Michelle, that putting in that language about, well, if they, if occupancy exceeds 12,000 square feet, we can start going out for things like that, that's not feasible or practical. But I think we should raise it from the low point of eight, and I was thinking in the 12 space range. And that's, those are my comments and suggestions. People can disagree with it, or agree with it, or do whatever when they make a motion.
Can I have one question? So did you delete, recommend deletion of three?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
Okay, and what was four? You adding back in accessory?
Yeah, I want them to be able to use the basement the way they're using it today.
So accessory, employee, it'll say accessory, the same as previous? Accessory, employee, storage, including general restroom facilities?
Yes, because I want them to have the use that they have today, adding general office.
Okay, accessory, okay.
So if it's accessory to medical, they can use it for that, if it's accessory to general office, they can use it for that. That's my intention.
Okay, so, but you do want to put the word employee? You want to say accessory, employee, and storage?
Yes. What, what did it read before, whatever it read before?
Okay, it said accessory.
Add general, basically add general office use.
Yeah, right, it didn't say anything in there, it just said accessory, employee, and storage uses.
Okay.
Including general restroom facilities, it didn't say anything.
So basically, number four unchanged, other than adding in the, that general office people could use it if they end up leasing something to a general office. That's my intention for that one. Ken?
No.
You had?
No, I just want to clarify. Just, however, you are changing that, I just want to make sure I, Michelle's got it all.
Okay. Okay, but that's...
Do you want to put, did you want to keep the square footage in, or do you just want to leave it?
Was the square footage in the previous one?
No, there were two.
Whatever it said before, add in general office, if we need to.
Which, which version of it do you want?
The last version we had, was that 96?
Yep, so let me just get it, so we know.
So whatever 96 was, have it say that, and if we need to add in general office, because we're updating the whole building, we add in general office.
Do we need to add that, or if we're changing the whole building to add general office though? Sounds like we don't.
We might not need it, but where this is specifically addressed in the basement, I just want to, just let people know, my intention is to leave it the same, and only add general office, if that needs to be added in.
Yeah, I'll just say that... It didn't say, it didn't say anything. I, I added that to try to be more specific, so all it was, is going to say is, and unfortunately, the 96 didn't say, it just said the remainder, so that was using a different plan. So I think it, you'll say the section of the basement from the elevator toward Main Street, I had east of the main entrance ramp, but whatever you prefer, it says shall be limited in use to accessory, employee, and storage uses. It didn't say anything. It's, it's going to tie back to the other condition that specifically says medical offices. So it doesn't have anything about medical or general in that.
Okay, then we don't need to add in general.
Okay, we don't, right, so, so the new four is going to say that section...
Just eliminate four, if we're not changing anything.
Yeah, no, because this is a new special permit, so you should keep that in.
Don't all the old conditions come?
No, no, they don't, not...
No, she relisted, if you compare these to the others.
Not unless you specify, they don't.
A lot of these are the ones that were in previous conditions, if you compare it to the previous special permit.
The old ones all disappear.
So are you all set, Michelle?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to say the basement area east of the main entrance ramp.
Can't you say from the elevator to the Main Street?
Yeah, but it's the back of the building, it's not to, it's not the elevator to Main Street, it's the back that's used for the accessory, right?
Right, yeah. No, no, it's from the elevator to the Main Street.
Okay.
Do we have to leave that specific?
That section, that's what the floor plan shows, so I, I don't, I don't know.
Can we just allow general office in the basement too?
We'll leave it exactly as condition five, though, in 93, I wouldn't use the 96, because 96 just says the remainder, so you don't know what it's referring to, because you'd need to go into the rest of that. So that section of the basement from the elevator toward Main Street shall be limited in use to accessory, employee, and storage uses, including general restroom facilities only. That's what...
There's a little break down there, kitchen, I think that's what the employee area is.
Yeah, could be, yeah, okay.
So are your questions answered? Michelle?
Right, this is the front, okay. I just want to make sure we're all talking about, yeah, we're all talking about the same thing. The bottom of the page is Main Street.
Right. And I believe it's from this area back.
It's from the elevator toward Main Street, from the elevator toward Main Street.
Right.
Right, and I had, I had said it was east of the ramp, so this is where the ramp is, so, okay, so this is the part that is... Okay, if you're, that, that's fine, that's the new four then, it'll say exactly what five said in this.
So you're all set?
I'm all set with that, my only other question had to do with this, your last one, you said, oh, the Ward Councilor can go out, once you put the condition in, the Ward Councilor can go out if he wants to, there's nothing he can do, he would have to, you'd have to come back and amend the special permit.
Right.
Who's going to do that?
Well, no, all I'm saying is that we changed...
Yeah.
We changed that to be like 12 or so spaces.
Right, I heard that, right.
And that's all I was saying.
Oh, but when you said if there's a problem, okay.
And I said, in general, if there's a problem, the Ward Councilor will be aware of it, and then we can call them back in and say the Ward Councilor is raising this issue, the petitioner.
For what? If they're in compliance with the condition, what are we calling them in on?
Well, it would be after Ward Councilor convince them that they have to come in.
Oh, okay, all right, I just meant, there's no recourse if they, oh, I thought you meant...
No, 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 there's no specific thing that we're going to read, A, B, C, D, equals E.
Right, right, okay.
That was...
They'd have to volunteer to come in.
That was an anecdotal comment that I added at the end, on how this might be marked.
Okay, get it.
Okay. So you got what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Kenny Tanucci, you had a question?
Chair, yes, I have a question first, on, surprise, surprise, condition number two, on that last two sentences, any other medical center use, can we replace any, the word "other" with "new"? Would that work? Any future medical center use shall require an amendment in the special permit, because that would allow, if there by chance happens to be some medical center use that exists there now, we wouldn't have to look at it, but any future one, Nelson would have to look at it, and say, yeah, whatever. And then the second part of that, this special permit supersedes previous special permits, that needs to stay in, right? Because we've, we're eliminating all the previous conditions from the previous special permits, except for the ones noted.
I, Michelle?
It's not that you're eliminating them, it's, they're going to exercise their rights under this special permit, they don't pick and choose which special permit, which parts of which they want to do.
So does this special permit supersedes previous special permits, is that necessary?
Probably not.
Because doesn't this already supersede, every special permit supersedes its previous one, right?
Probably not, I was trying to be clear, because one of the other special permits allowed a clinic, which is different, and there is no clinic there. It had an ultrasound, and it had a whole, you know, facility there, that's no longer there.
Okay, so we can't just go with the assumption you'd prefer to list that this, make it clear that this supersedes the previous one?
I thought it was important, given all this confusion with all the different types of medical that have been there and that are there now. I don't think your anything new would be easily done, because it's anything new where? In which suite?
Anywhere.
Well, right, so if they can prove that there was this type of medical use in this suite, does that mean it can get switched over to the other suite? So I think it would be a...
It would be up to the building inspector.
A confusing, difficult, I don't see that it would serve any purpose, if you tried to say anything new, since there doesn't seem to be a sense of what's there now.
But that's why it's not looking at what's there now, what was there before that might be considered a medical center use?
But it's new as of the date of this permit, right? So you need to know right now what's in there.
Goes back to, yeah.
Right.
Well, don't they have certificates of occupancy?
Every op, every...
I was told that they have certificate of occupancies for each of the units, so every time a new company, I mean, a new, yeah, new business comes in, wouldn't they need that certificate of occupancy to get from the commissioner, the building commissioner?
Well, it depends.
And you can determine whether or not it's a medical center or a medical office.
And that way, we don't have to look back at what's there and potentially...
He has a list right now of what's vacant and what's going on, and he can kind of hold them to their...
Yeah, I don't know if they all have certificates of occupancy, I, I didn't look into all that, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I thought the council said they did.
But even if they don't, we don't want to go digging into existing tenants, we're just concerned moving forward. Or we just get rid of that part altogether.
But I mean, you do want to, because if there's an existing tenant, it is now the same type of business, so you need to know what type of business it is, right? So, I mean, I don't know, you could, you could do it, but I thought there was, you know, it's up to you if you want to try to keep something in.
Can I answer your question, Diane?
I think so.
Kenny, do you have any more questions? Because Stephanie has a question.
Not a question, no.
Okay, Stephanie?
The note on Exhibit E, the rent rule, says all tenants are medical uses under the definition of medical center, which is the petitioner saying that?
Ah, the petitioner provided that.
Yeah, probably, so it's them saying that.
So if they're currently, you know, accepting tenants based on that current zoning definition of medical center, that's what they've been operating under, and they do have a lot of spaces... that's what they've been operating under. And they do have a lot of spaces here, which could, you know, be flex a lot, I assume. So to review every single one seems uh, not feasible. I mean, maybe for the building commissioner, but not for, to have to come back here. And I, I guess I don't see why you wouldn't just say medical center use as currently defined is allowed. Is it only because of the parking issue? In which case, then we're saying, well, if it becomes an issue, then you have to work with the counselor. It seems like there's a plenty of medical center use going out, is what I'm saying, and it has been, potentially, for a while.
I, I don't know that to be true or not true. So, Michelle?
I don't know. I don't, I mean, this statement, their medical uses under the definition. I don't know which medical uses, I mean, again, I don't mean to keep going back to some of these. I don't think there's a dialysis center there. Um, but maybe there is, or maybe there could be, if, yeah.
But that's not part of our decision anyway.
No, no, my point is, is, is I, I don't know. That's why I was recommending you, you limit what type of medical center be there. You know, otherwise, according to that line of thinking, if the building commissioner thinks this is all medical center, an urgent care center could go in there. I, I don't know. I, I, again, was more comfortable with trying to limit like you do typically. You, you see what the petition is, and you, especially with these non-conforming, you, you specify what is going in there, and if there are changes, they come back.
Would a building commissioner look, though, at a definition that has lapsed and currently says medical center? So would they be looking at medical center for current use versus medical office, which is no longer in the regulation?
He's going to look at, he's going to look at the special permit. I don't know that there was ever a definition of medical office, right? I don't know that, and I don't have that code here. If there's no definition, it's just the common sense. You know, a medical office is not the same as a clinic, is not the same as a hospital, is not the same as a, you know, urgent care center. So I, I think he just uses the common sense definition. I don't have...
Does that answer your question, Stephanie?
I don't have the old code here. You don't want me to go get it.
Right, and the old code isn't referenced in the, it doesn't look like in the old special permit, in the original.
I mean, the two special permits came because one was medical office, and they wanted to add clinic. Clinic was seen as different from medical center. I believe there used to be a category for clinic.
And clinic was approved as part of one of the...
One of the permits, it was approved.
Yeah.
But that clinic had an ultrasound, I think it was an ultrasound, um... clinic. So anyways, I don't, I don't have that here. You don't?
Well, if you want to go get it, and you think it will answer these questions, go get it. We'll take a recess for ten minutes.
I mean, I still feel like there's some confusion about this, so...
Okay, well, then, is there a motion to, uh, take a ten-minute recess while Michelle, Michelle goes and gets the documents, I will clarify. Is there a motion? Stephanie, you want to make that motion? Since you're, you're the one asking the question, then we, we can't do it.
I mean, my, well, my motion was to say medical center is okay for the whole building, but I don't think people...
If you want me to go if you don't need it, I won't walk. I don't, doesn't matter.
Well, no, you're saying you need it. So let's take a recess, let's take a recess,
Well, I'm saying it might clarify.
And you can go up and get the documents you need to properly answer the question. That's fine with me, is, but I thought when we talked last time, I can't just say we're taking a recess where we need to get, have a motion to take a recess.
I think so.
Is that, is that what you told me a week or so ago? So, but no one wants to make a motion to take a recess?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so Ken's made the motion, Eric Henry, would you like to second that motion?
I'd second that motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Okay, ten-minute recess. We're recessing at ten thirty-six, and we'll reconvene at ten forty-five. Do you need Hammer anything? Oh, wait, I might, hold on.
Yes, okay, so it's ten fifty. Can I have a motion to resume the meeting?
I'll make a motion to resume.
Diane made a motion to resume. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kenny seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We re-engaged at ten fifty P. M.
Who seconded?
I did.
Kenny.
This is what I found. So in seventy, from seventy-seven to ninety-seven, clinics were classified as hospitals and clinics. Okay? In ninety-seven, clinics were separated. They were reclassified into a new category called medical and dental offices or clinic. That was in ninety-seven. So when this first permit was issued.
Ninety-three.
In ninety-three, medical offices didn't have their own category. Okay?
Yep.
Medical and dental were, did not have a definition. Clinic had its own definition. Clinics were distinguishable from offices because there was an established definition for clinic. So in ninety-three, where's the first decision? So in the ninety-three decision, was medical offices. They were seeking general medical office, general and medical offices, clinic, optical shop, and apartment. What was granted in the special permit in ninety-three was medical offices and optical shop only. So they didn't grant clinic and they didn't grant general offices and they didn't grant department. Okay, so that's medical offices. That's when it first was converted from the home for aged persons to medical offices. There wasn't a separate category for medical offices at that time. Then in ninety-six, when they come back, they're now asking for clinic. Clinic is defined. But in ninety-six, it was still as part of hospital and clinic. So it was a separate category. Clinic wasn't separated till ninety-seven. In twenty-twelve is when we separated, we created medical center. For outpatient medical services providers and facilities excluding hospitals, but including medical dental offices, all clinics. They all gonna, they would, they're all gonna be care, come under this new definition of medical center. Because medical office, medical and dental office and clinic, I guess, wasn't broad enough. So that's what was, that's what the council proposed. That's when the current definition came in. So medical dental offices was taken out. Clinic was also, the definition of clinic was also deleted because now it comes in under medical center.
So as of two thousand twelve, medical offices doesn't exist anymore?
That's correct. No, it exists.
Clinic doesn't exist anymore.
They're not separate use categories. They're now all part of medical center.
Okay.
And then there's a definition for medical center, which is the same one here today, that broadly includes all these different things. And the other question. Was parking. Medical and dental offices parking was five point five per thousand.
Back, way back when. The first permit, the first special permit in ninety-three.
In ninety-six, in ninety-three, there wasn't, in ninety-three, there wasn't a, there wasn't a. Ninety-three, we didn't have medical and dental. Did I say that? No, in ninety-three, it was five point five. Oh, no, because it was medical dental. It was, it was medical dental in clinics. In ninety-seven, they got combined, clinics got combined with medical and dental. There were parking, there were parking requirements for, for medical and dental offices in ninety-six. I'm sorry, ninety-three. It was in nineteen seventy-seven, medical and dental offices had five point five per thousand. This is the original zoning in seventy-seven.
Okay.
It goes back. That's the parking.
So it answers my question that the parking requirements didn't increase since ninety-six.
Since seventy-seven.
Right, but based on what we were reviewing since ninety-six. So there will always been five point five.
Right. This board allowed the reduced.
To be reduced.
Right.
Okay, Stephanie, does it resolve your question that you had?
So there is a definition of medical office.
At some point in the history?
No, there is not.
Okay.
There is not a definition. And if there's no definition, you just use the plain common language.
But there was a lot of separation between, like, medical office and clinic were used separately.
In general office was also separate. Because in seventy-seven, there's a separate use category for medical and dental offices. There's a separate use category for general offices. There isn't a separate category yet for clinic. I believe it was clinic and, it was part of clinic and hospital in seventy-seven.
And the ninety-six petition only approved a clinic specific to the diagnostic ultrasound. And it wasn't saying clinics in general. It was just saying.
It said, the ninety-six petition was to allow an ultrasound in related diagnostic clinic at the site. And then this is also occupying part of the basement. Clinics, at that time, clinics were allowed by special permit. Medical offices weren't. But they were already on there from the previous special permit as a pre-existing non-conforming, so. No, there's never, there's no definition of medical and dental offices.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, is that what you were, that's what I went to look for, right?
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure how it ties back, but. We've seen kind of.
It used to be a separate use category.
Yeah, and it's not now.
Right. It called, it's, it's, it's included in the bigger, this larger use category called medical center. Which is what that recommendation was based on. The medical center includes a lot of other things besides medical office.
Okay.
That's, so.
There's no definition of medical office.
No.
Yeah.
And it just seems like this recommendation, then if you're saying no other medical center uses or any other medical center use shall require an amendment, so it, it could be a frequent amendment with multiple tenants possible in this large building.
Right, if they don't know what's. It's in there now exactly, or you don't know, well then, I guess you can't necessarily exclude that. I would still recommend if there are things you don't, types of medical center you don't want to be able to go in there under this special permit, I think you should specify that. That is not.
Okay, get a pad of paper out and start reading off the list. I mean, well, Ken, what do you want?
Up to you.
I mean, this is where we're at. I mean, they can't tell us what they have in there. You're telling us we need to specify what we don't want in there.
I would recommend that.
So start reading and start writing. The other option is to table it, have the petitioner provide a list of what they have and what they're doing, and then.
Why can't we make that a condition where we can say, we have a list of the current tenants that are there now, we have a list of what is vacant, what's vacant. Why can't we get a list of the people that they listed on that form, make sure they get certificate of occupancy and lead it up to the discretion of the building commissioner to say whether or not it fits the building. If it fits general office or if it fits medical center or medical office. We're making a lot of.
Michelle?
At this point. And I think if we put it in there that we have a list, provided by United Brokers, of all the tenants that are currently in there right now, then I might have, I might have sworn the commissioner, the contractor said that they did have certificate of occupancies. So if they do, then.
The building commissioner must have them. And at that time, the building commissioner, we can put on there, get all the approved, whatever tenants are in there, we want a list of all the tenants, and show that they have their certificate of occupancy. And then at that point, any future people that go in there, any future that come in, they have to get another occupancy permit to make sure that they are legit. I know there's no way of policing it, but the counselor can walk in there anytime he wants.
Do you want to put that in a motion, Diane?
Well, I know Ken has a better motion because he's got more things on it, so. You don't want to?
No. I'm just waiting for the.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, I, I can concede to, you and I went over a list, so if you would like to do it, you have it more comprehensive. But it's, I don't mind making a motion if.
So you're saying existing businesses that have certificates of occupancy can continue?
Correct.
But so if anything new comes in, he's going to, the building commissioner will determine if it meets medical office or general. And if it doesn't.
Right. Any existing tenant that's currently on that list, regardless of whether or not they have the certificate of occupancy, someone just moved in, they don't have it yet. They've already been in there. They've been in place for a while now, or they probably didn't have moved in. They've been in there for, I think, two thousand and twenty-three was the earliest one, I mean, the latest one. They've been in there for a while. Let them stay. Anybody else after that?
Okay.
Any future new people, new people?
Then either Ken or Diane make a motion. Because we covered this a while ago, that we were going to say everyone, anyone who's there is okay. But there seemed to be problems with that, so.
Well.
Let's.
Yeah, so you, you want to say?
Let them make a motion. Ken make a motion or Diane will want to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the special permit with the following list of amended conditions that were made by the planner. Keep number one, modify number two to say this special permit allows use of the property for medical offices and or general offices and an optical shop, which must be accessory to the onset medical office and shall be limited to six hundred and seventy-five square feet. Any future medical center use shall require approval by the building commissioner. This special permit supersedes previous special permits.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get the second.
So essentially, it's just any, modify the second sentence to say any future medical center use shall require approval by the building commissioner. And then leave the third sentence.
What do you mean approval? Because the.
Sorry, certificate of occupancy.
Requires medical center to be, requires special permit. So what are you saying? You want him to?
He will make the decision whether or not it falls under medical center use and will require them coming before us to get a special permit. So it leaves the determination with the building commissioner.
Okay.
I don't want to say require an amendment because it may not require an amendment. Leave that up to Nelson, the building commissioner to decide.
So you want to say any future medical use?
Any future medical center use shall require approval by the building commissioner. Because this whole building center thing is what the body, the issue.
But I don't think you can say center because I think you, center, why, why would you say medical center use requires his approval? It's already regulated under the zoning. That's what they're trying to get. I think you want him just to review medical uses, right?
Isn't the whole, this whole discussion, the difference between medical offices and medical center, this whole, like, last hour plus?
Right, and right now, the permit only allows medical office. It doesn't allow medical center.
Right.
But you, you're saying you want them?
Be, for, just for future, in case a future one comes in for medical center.
Well, I don't think you need to say it at all, then he's going to review it, anybody that applies for.
But that's what we said initially. Initially, we were going to strike that whole sentence, but then that wouldn't. But then it all came full circle and we had to put something back in. And we were going to list everything that didn't need to be listed.
I don't think you have to put it back in. If you're comfortable with medical office. I thought the concern was some of these weren't medical office.
Okay.
Ken, you're making the motion. Make the motion as you feel and see if we get a second and see what the votes are.
If it's okay, that, everyone's okay without this medical center, I thought that was the problem we were all stuck on. So I will, again, modify number two, just take out the second sentence. Any other medical center you shall require an amendment of the special permit. And then the special permit supersedes previous special permits. Eliminate number three. Replace number four with the use condition number five from the special permit case ninety-three dash eighteen. Five remains the same, six remains the same, seven remains the same, eight remains the same, nine remains the same. Infant number ten, provide copy and agreement for use of off-street parking for ten vehicles. So really, the only change to the original ten conditions is removal of the second sentence from number two.
And delete three?
Delete number three.
You want to keep number three?
No, delete number three. And I'm just reviewing it. Replace four with the original condition five from ninety-three eighteen and change the number of vehicles to ten from forty-two in number ten.
Are you eliminating space forty-nine as well?
I don't care.
Because otherwise it's as per plan, so either they can do it or they're not.
Yep, it's per plan.
Well, I thought we were going to put bicycle rack in forty-nine.
If it's, I would not want to park my bicycle behind a dumpster. So I would just leave it the way it is. Like, they're going to have to get permission somewhere to put a bike rack. That makes sense. You can have that if you want.
Can you have what you need, Michelle? Okay, so is there a second to that?
I'd like to make a second, but I'd like to, if I could, just elaborate. I'm so sorry. But I don't want anything to happen to the existing tenants. I want them to be able to stay. So do I just put that in there, that the existing tenants that are on that list, regardless of whatever they fall under, are able to stay? of whatever they fall under, are able to stay? And I put that in there, or they need to provide proof that they have a certificate of occupancy for each of those people, regardless if they even have that, I want them to be able to stay. So that's my only concern. I don't want anyone to get kicked out of the building.
I think you can, you can state, if you're asking me, I think you can state, existing tenants identified, you know, on this list, may remain, but I would definitely think they need to have an occupancy certificate, because I don't know, I'm not saying anything against this owner, I don't know who's moved in and who's moved out, and again, what's morphed into what, so I don't know. You know, I, I think you should say that they have a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, I, I would like to make that amendment as another, that would be number 11, where if they do not have the certificate of occupancy, that they get one.
I just have existing tenants may remain with valid certificate of occupancy.
Right.
I mean, if they don't have it and they can't get it, then that's not-
Well, I don't want them to, that, that, no, I just-
I don't know who's, I don't know who's in there or what these, I don't know, I don't, I can't say.
I just don't want to lose the tenants. I was just going to say, all the existing tenants can stay regardless, any future people need to get certificate of occupancy. According to the list provided by-
Yeah, I mean, I think honestly, though, I don't think you can even say that, like, if, if we find, if, if, aside from this, if the building inspector finds there's someone in there that doesn't have an occupancy certificate, it doesn't matter that you put that in the permit, we can't override the building code, you know?
So we don't need to put it in? You're saying?
What, the certificate of occupancy?
Yeah. We don't need to put in the condition 11, is what I'm saying.
I don't think-
Keep it in, keep it in with the certificate of occupancy.
What was that?
Keep it in with them getting a certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
If, if anything comes out of this, we will then deal with it at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if Nelson comes in and says, oh, this absolutely shouldn't be here, then we'll have to do something else. But this is just going out of rank.
Yeah, exactly. Existing tenants may remain with certificate of occupancy, yes.
What, do we just want to say all tenants? No, that's, yes, that's actually number 10, because three got eliminated.
That's the new 10.
So do we want to say all new, or just all tenants must have certificate of occupancy?
Your motion, tell me.
So add, add the, add the new 10, which would just say all tenants must have, required to have a certificate of occupancy. That covers old, that covers new. I didn't want to-
I mean, I don't think you need to say that, that's, that's the law, right? That's, you don't need to say that.
Didn't we just say we wanted to put that in? And deal with it?
Yeah, just do it.
Just your motion, if you want to put it in, add it in and see if people vote it.
That's in addition to existing tenants may remain?
No, just put all tenants must have certificates of occupancy, it's stating the obvious, but-
I will ask, I will ask, can I, when I ask?
Well, whatever, I don't know. I'll defer to, I'll defer to Diane's.
Yeah, I mean, the existing tenants need a certificate of occupancy, so it's the same
Hold on a second, Risa has something. Risa, is this, deal with this?
Yes, it's a question, a clarification on that. Does that mean we're forcing the landlord to keep the tenants and, or any condition?
No, we're not forcing them to keep anybody, I mean, he wants to keep them.
Yes, that's-
I just don't want them to lose them.
Okay, as long as we're not saying they-
No, no, he doesn't have to keep them.
Have to stay, okay.
So is it all tenants require certificate of occupancy?
Yes, yes, now and for future.
Which is?
Which is the law. And they can provide the ones that, you know.
So you and Ken are in sync on what you're doing, and Ken's proposed it, you're second?
Correct.
And Michelle's written it all down? Whether she agrees or does not?
I wrote something down, I want to make sure it's all tenants require certificate of occupancy. So you've gone from, you want existing tenants to stay, to all tenants require certificate of occupancy, so if there's an existing tenant that doesn't have one?
Well, you said we couldn't do that, you said they have, they were going to get out anyway, if, if, if-
Well, right, I mean, I'm just saying, we can't make them stay.
Right, so that's, that's why we changed it.
Okay.
We can't make them stay, but we want, don't want them to have to leave.
Right.
Well, again, and I'm not trying to say anything, I think this is like a different-
Okay, I'm done.
You're going, you, this is a different, that's, this is something completely different from that.
So I motioned, I believe Diane made a friendly amendment, which I accepted, and now, is Diane second?
Okay.
You're all set to take your-
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, well, let's, let's go, give me a second here, because we will people around. Okay, go ahead, I think I get the first few.
Ken Intenucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuhah?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
No.
Ronnie Raj Verma?
Chuck Iovin?
Yes.
So passes seven to one. The next item on the agenda is, um, let's deal with the subdivision control first, 100
So this is a petition for an approval not required subdivision plan. This is actually two plans, two sheets to the same plan. So this is a subdivision of three parcels, 100 Hospital Road, 57 Hospital Road, and 178 Seven Street, subdividing three parcels and resulting in five new lots. So the first lot is going to be the hospital parcel, which is the hospital development site. This board granted the special permit for the new hospital to go in, and that is approximately the same site that you saw in the proposed subdivision plan at the time you granted the special permit. So hospital parcel, what's labeled hospital parcel on the northern side of Hospital Road, that's the new hospital site. Malden Community Parcel is being created from 100 Hospital, that's down on the left, down near Marihill Road, that is going to be, um, the city will take over that parcel. You have parcel, community parcel one and community parcel two. On the southern side of Hospital Road, you have Malden Community Parcel Two. 57 Hospital Road is being divided, though, into community parcel two, and also another portion, Malden Tufts Parcel Two, that's being merged with 178 Seven. So 178 Seven is getting larger, it's getting merged with part of 57, and creating the hospital site, creating the two Malden Community Parcels, and then there's also a Malden Tufts Parcel One, which is down the end of Hospital Road, near Seven Street, and that's just going to continue to be owned by Tufts. So all the lots have frontage on a public way, so it's properly before you for approval not required. So my recommendation is you approve the plan, and you authorize the chair to endorse the plan.
Is there a motion? Diane Chuhah?
I make that motion to drop the plan and have a good-
A second, Ken Intenucci? I'll second that. All, roll call?
No, it doesn't matter.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? No one's opposed, motion carries. Next item, 1236 Eastern Avenue.
So this was a petition that came before you, it was tabled, you, you held the public hearing, you, it was tabled back in March of 2024 to allow the petitioner to provide additional information that you requested, pursue some, I believe it was a lease with the MBTA, to use part of that right away, also to address some site, ongoing site issues. And we recently received the request to withdraw the petition. So they're not moving forward. That was a petition to construct an addition, and you, again, had requested several, given the petitioner the opportunity to address several issues.
With prejudice or without prejudice?
He, I requested he submitted to withdraw without prejudice, he just said he withdraws the petition, he didn't specify. I, I would, you know, it's, it's up to you, if, if you say with prejudice, then he can't come back within two years, unless he makes a case that he's addressed the issues. If you say without prejudice, he can come back at any time with the same plan, so it's-
Is there a motion? Ken Intenucci?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to allow withdrawal of the petition without prejudice.
Is there a second?
That, you probably should do the roll call. That was without prejudice, right? Ken Intenucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuhah?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone? Ronnie Raj Verma?
Chuck Iovin?
Yes. And then Medford Street's still open. Okay, next item, Ronnie, can you give us a community preservation committee?
Thank you, Mr. Sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, little update from our February meeting. Malden River Works, the project ran into some small roadblocks that are being addressed that have delayed the project, namely additional soil testing, small dock redesign due to the account of new water level data, and a small redesign of the pedestrian pathway to account for some large vehicles purchased by the DPW. Project is expected to go out to bid in the spring. The early learning center playground construction is complete, a permanent sign is in progress of being designed, playground is open when not in session. Linden Rink construction is complete with a Tiger Center painted in the middle, contractors will come back to reseed and mulch some areas in the spring. Fitzgerald Park, the design is complete, contracts are signed as of this week, that was in February. Work will begin this spring. Kersted Park, construction is substantially complete, final punch list is complete, park will open in the spring of '24. That's it for CPC for now, and we also had, actually, yeah, that's it for CPC for now, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Michelle, master plan and open space.
You have a memo attached to the agenda that is a memo dated March 3, 2025, from OSPCD, that's giving you an update in the open space recreation plan, in the master plan, now known as comprehensive plan process. You can take a look at that. I do also want to add an update, so this is, there's something, this is, the update in terms of, the last part of this isn't exactly accurate. The city council president requested the chair, who's the chair of the master plan steering committee, that the committee reconvene, so before all the fundings in place, so that we can have an internal meeting, discuss charter, whether the charter needs to change, committee composition, et cetera, the RFP. And so the chair has called to reconvene the committee, we'll be meeting on March 31st. And that's the existing master plan steering committee. And that is that update. Council president wanted to make sure the planning board knew he was asking for that as well.
Very good.
So-
Thank you.
That is that.
Next scheduled meeting's April 9th. We don't have any associates, so if you can't make it, please let Michelle or I know.
Yes, as soon as possible, please let me know.
What's that, Eric? Twenty-fifth?
No, good.
Not for us, I don't think.
There's an email, the 25th was in one of your-
I think when I write, like, March 25th, I'm meaning 2025, but that's happened once in the past, people think it's the 25th of March, it's not.
Oh, okay.
It's, no, I, my email probably said PB March 25.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I won't do it anymore, or I'll write 2025, and then you'll know.
Okay, if there are no other questions, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Diane Chuhah, is there a, a second?
Second that.
Ronnie Verma, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries.
I didn't think that was gonna be a man.
Give me one second, please.
My god, I thought it was gonna be a quickie.
11:31. Uh, second, and 11:30.